And I am of counsel with the South Carolina Association of Counties. And so I'm honored to be here, but I also feel completely like a fish out of water. Because this is my first direct interaction on the school board level. So I will go ahead and preface that I don't have a background in this in any shape, form, or fashion. And so the question becomes, well, then why are you here? Well, I've worked, as I said, with the Association of Counties for going on almost nineteen years at this point. And my primary capacity has been part of the legislative team and development policy. In fact, the last five years up until July of this year, I was the director over our governmental affairs. So I managed our legislative team. And so essentially, I'm in a path now that kind of puts me towards retirement. And but then I get to do a lot more things like this. And so the reason why I believe I'm here is that I did something very similar back with the county council back in July. And so I think there are a lot of similarities in terms of your dynamics, in terms of your interactions with each other, your interaction with the superintendent, your interaction with the community. And so hopefully, my goal today is to share some things that will be helpful. So the way I want to start out by saying is that I think this is going to be good news and good news. So the good news is, again, hopefully, I will be able to shed some light on some things, remind you of some things you already are familiar with, but also perhaps give you some things to help you do a better job at what your function is. But the other good news is that if I say things and you hate my guts, you won't have to see me again. So again, this is a win-win, hopefully, in that scenario. On a serious note, though, I am, just to give you a quick background about myself, I am from Beaufort. And the Low Countries near and dead in my heart because my dad worked at the neighborship yard. And so growing up, I spent a lot of time in Charleston. In fact, they actually lived in Wesley, they actually in Maryville for a number of years. But of course, they moved back to Beaufort before I was born, so I didn't get that experience. But so anyway, Charleston has always had a special place in my heart. But I want to start out by saying that I really do appreciate what you do because it is so important. And why do I say that? The decisions that you, as a board, make is vital in determining the direction of the education of the children specifically for Charleston County. But ultimately, you're part of shaping what will be our future. Because not only are those students going to, some will stay here, some will go on and go out to various positive states and through the nation, but ultimately, a part of what you set in place will give them the foundation to be our future leaders. Quite frankly, some of them ultimately end up maybe sitting in some of the seats that you are right now. So I do want to applaud you for taking on public service in that sense and understanding the importance of the role that you all play. And so again, that's why I'm also honored to be here to hopefully help you and maybe give you some insights into just better carrying out the role that you have as board members. So I want to talk in terms of a couple of things. I want to talk in very broad and general terms about your policy and role as board members. I will touch a little bit on your interaction with community. And then I'll talk a little bit about your interaction with the superintendent. So that's kind of the order I'll do things.
And, and this was the big point, so this is not a lecture. So this is a chance for any board member, when you hear something come up and we're talking about a specific policy, whether it's BE on board members or BBA on board powers and duties, just raise your hand and be acknowledged and get it out. This is a free-frowing conversation. This isn't the board member. But I would ask that we can try to keep it, we don't have to worry about the two-minute rule, but.
Thank you very much, Mr. Grubowski. And you actually jumped, because I was actually about to say that, that while hopefully, we'll, I'll reserve for questions. And feel free at any point to stop and interject with anything. And you know, obviously, like I said, again, my background is not into your policies and stuff. And so that's why I'm grateful that you have your counsel here, Mr. Johnson, and also your parliamentarian here, Mr. Frampton. But again, I will talk in very, very general terms. So again, just in very broad terms, your powers and responsibility. Of course, you establish the direction of the school district for the county. You appoint the superintendent. Ultimately, any matters that involve administrative proceedings or appeals, either from parents, students, or either employees, those are ultimately matters that will come before you. So you wear multiple hats. Of course, you are also responsible for adopting a budget for the school district, so.
Being there, Dr. Temple's having some trouble getting on, and so you're climbing out of bed a few days so far.
And I'm a good listener, I just know some people are busy.
Well, and again, I will have the presentation. So anything that I cover will be there, and of course, I'll have my information if there's some questions.
I'm in. I'm in.
Okay, you can move on to the next slide.
Give it just a minute.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so again, those are your powers in a very general sense and in terms of what you do. I understand that there are other more specific things. And part of how you carry out your function is through committees. But first and foremost, one of the things that I want to remind you of as a board is that you work as a unit and not as individual. You were each individually elected to be in the position that you are. And so obviously, the constituents and voters in your particular district saw fit to put you in this position. And so of course, you are also mindful of the things that are, that were important to them, and that's a part of why they put you in this position. However, now that you are here, understand and always remember that you're now part of a board collective. You bring those individual ideas and experiences, which are a good thing. Because I imagine, like any board, there are various backgrounds and expertise that are representative amongst your board. And so that is a good thing, but understanding, oh, okay. All right, okay, so I already kind of covered that, so you can go to the next slide. But ultimately, understanding that you work as a unit and not as an individual. And so what that means in very practical terms is, and if you can go to the next slide, is just thinking of in terms of the golden rule, which is you treat others as you would own others to treat you. That means that while you get to have a voice, you want to have the common courtesy and respect that someone's not interrupting you while you're speaking, just, you know, things like that. But also understanding that just because you have an idea, that ultimately may not be the direction that the board goes in. And once the board makes a collective decision, it is then your role and job to support and get behind that decision. Because again, you work as a unit, not as individuals. But again, understanding you all bring something individually and to the table so that collectively, hopefully, you come up with a very good decision that looks at all of the various aspects and viewpoints, and that's taking into consideration in any decisions that you make in terms of what you implement for purposes of this school district. It's also important to understand your, the rules that you're operating by. And what I mean by that is, one, from a general standpoint, state law, but more specifically, board rules, your policies and your procedures. That is your guiding, that's your guidelines in terms of how you operate and how you conduct business as a board. So it's important to know that. It's important to get familiar with that, and it's important to, you know, if there are any questions you got, I'd get those questions answered. Because that's ultimately what guides and directs how you are to act. And so it's very important. Also, it's good to know that you've got a parliamentarian here. You know, like any body, you have to have some structure to operate. You know, you can't just have everyone talking over everyone, and because obviously, that just produces chaos. And ultimately, nothing really efficiently gets done. So again, understanding some basic parliamentary rules and certainly, Mr. Frampton is here to keep you within those guidelines. But just making sure that you're familiar with the rules that which you're operating under. And that will help you better, quite frankly, to do your job and to stay within your parameters. Again, once a decision is made by the board, while it might not have been, you know, first choice, it might not have even been the decision that you think is best. Ultimately, it's your member then to get behind and support collectively whatever the board decides in terms of the decision. And so again, we see that on the county side, but that's true not only for what you do, but for any of our elected positions in the state or any board or capacity that you you serve on. It's just understanding and remembering, keeping that in mind, is that, again, you work as a unit and being able to support. And that takes, that takes a certain amount of humility at times. You know, again, anyone that, that, that puts themselves in a position like you all to run for a public office, to serve in a public capacity, you come here because, one, you have confidence that you have something to offer, meaningful in this capacity, and you also have a certain amount of ambition. And so again, but you have to balance that with, again, working collectively as a group and understanding that sometimes it takes humility to be able to step back after you've articulated your position and the board decides ultimately to move in a different direction from what you think.
Ask the question.
Sure.
Because this seems to be the big issue. So the board, as a Cal meeting, discusses an issue. The board discusses the issue at the board meeting, and it votes. The vote's been made. And then suddenly, what is your opportunity to be able to continue to voice your concern? Because as I understand what you're saying is, once the vote has been made, that we move on onto the next issue. Because what we see a lot, and I could be as guilty as anyone else, is that I may have, still have a strong opinion. So where does it take us when you still have that strong opinion? And what are the, you know, is that follow the policy? It seems that, you know.
And I may still have another question, you know.
Go ahead.
No, I'm following up with you. Like, it might not even be a strong opinion, it might even just be, I have another question now, but I'm not allowed to ask it now. Where, you know, I was allowed to ask during Cal, but I didn't have that question during Cal because I didn't know all the information. And then once I do know more, or I do understand more, then I have another question and I can't ask it.
And I think, I think what Ms. Jewett's alluding to is, is how do we protect the minority on an issue? You know, whether through agenda. I was addressing, the board has actually taken a vote. And once the board has taken a vote on an issue, in my view, reading what you're saying, is that that's the end and we move forward. But what Ms. Jewett has brought up is a very good point. At Cal, we could have an issue talked, no vote, no vote. But Ms. Jewett would like to bring it on forward, Mr. Parliamentarian, this may, you may have to stick into. But I call it the protecting of the minority.
Sometimes it's just that you're, you're thinking things through and you want to examine it from all angles, which I like to do because I'm very analytical by nature. And I, what I'm hearing her say is, like, you know, as you're thinking about it later on and something else comes to you, then what is your recourse to then explore the matter further? Generally, what I've done is followed up with staff or the superintendent offline. But there is also the element of wanting to discuss it publicly because you're being held accountable by your constituents.
Okay.
Did I articulate that well?
And so I think one of the best ways to address this, and I'm going to keep hitting this from several different angles because I can't stress this enough. If nothing else I say today makes sense or resonate with you, I want it to be this one idea. And that's the idea of relationships. You are not going to agree on everything, nor should you. But there's a way to agree and there's a way to disagree. And so that, in turn, will affect how you operate. So specifically addressing the situation, either where you realize after a matter has been decided, you didn't have all the information, you gathered more information, so you've got more questions, or even if you're on the quote-unquote losing side of a particular decision that is made by the board. The relationship should allow, and again, I don't know specifically how you all go about setting your agenda, but again, there's nothing that would prevent necessarily having a matter revisited from another angle and bringing that up back before, as an agenda matter, to come back before the board just for further discussion, clarification, not to undo the decision, but further, further clarification. And quite frankly, in that discussion, what may happen is that there's new light shed for the board as a whole. And so that ultimately could result in the board going back and amending that determination that they made based on some considerations, maybe that as a whole they didn't take. So while it is true, once the board makes a decision, you move, that may not necessarily be the end of that matter. But again, that also hinges back on what I said earlier about, in terms of relationships and how you approach things. Obviously, you know, if it's a matter where, you know, again, depending on what issues, we can, we can sometimes get very passionate about what we believe and stuff. And so obviously, if it's presented in a way that, 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 quite frankly, is maybe not respectful to the rest of the board, or quite frankly, there's a turnoff, then there's probably not going to be a general willingness, maybe for the board collectively want to go back and revisit that. And so that's why I keep saying that, that that's important. But again, that is one way to address that. So I hope that, hopefully, that answers your question specifically in that sense. Again, unless there's something within your rules that would allow that. And again, obviously, from a parliamentarian standpoint, or once a decision is made, you know, again, that matter specifically can't come back unless, again, you're on the prevailing side and you move to reconsider. But apart from that, that is one way I've been prepared.
And I think, and so that we can move on with this, I think we can cover that more on the mechanic side when we get into the agenda disciplines, because I think that is the one issue we all struggle with, is how to get this agenda or get your issues brought back through on agendas, so.
Time check, because we're, we're at one thirty, and our next item is at one forty. That's why I was trying to move this off. So we need to reset the clock because it doesn't seem like we're getting through the content.
Yeah, yeah, I promise, and I, you know, again, I know you all have some other things, I'll stay around. But I'll move along with this, because again, I just tried to kind of give a general overview. So the other way that you work is through your committees. And those committees are defined by your rules and policy. I don't know the specifics of how this works, but whether or not your chair has the ability to maybe appoint other committees as necessary. But at any rate, the committee work is, again, to better help the board as a whole. Again, the role of the committee is not to make decisions to bind the board, but to make recommendations. And there are times where the board will adopt whatever comes out of that committee's research and findings. Or the board may decide collectively to go in another direction. So again, it's kind of like the individual. While one individual doesn't control the board, neither does a recommendation by a committee. I'm going to touch on this because, again, this is an area that I'm seeing more and more, at least from the county side. So one of the things that I've worked very closely with is the Freedom of Information Act. In fact, I was very involved in the rewrite back in 2017. So a couple of things I want to touch on in that regard. Communications amongst board members. You need to be very, very careful about that. Certainly, you need to have the ability to communicate. But when you start these email chains, talking about board business, then you can find yourself in jeopardy of unintentionally in violation of the Freedom of Information Act. Because again, you're a public body and you're discussing business that is within your confines, but you hadn't gone through the proper notifications or things that the Freedom of Information Act requires you for purposes of a meeting. So, so again, avoid those kinds of things. Or if something comes to you and it's clear, you know, this is something that really needs to be discussed in the confines of the board meeting, let's say. Well, let's see if we can get that on the agenda, and let's take that up when we have our next scheduled board meeting. But just be very, very mindful of that. The other one that I wanted to really kind of hit is specifically executive session. The statutes are very, very clear about the five reasons as to why a public body goes into executive session. And when you look at the specifics of why, things like legal advice, you know, proposing a contract that has not been finalized or an opportunity to expand, there are some reasons why the premature release of that information would be very detrimental for a number of reasons. And so it's not a way of circumventing transparency. But it is a way to allow, a personnel matter for that matter. Very sensitive information, or there's an investigation going on within the district. Again, very sensitive information that, again, will, for a number of reasons, jeopardize the ability to move forward. So what happens in that general, in that executive session, needs to be protected. And it needs to be guarded, and that's where it stays. Now, obviously, if it's something that requires you to take a vote, you come back out in your public session and you take a vote based on what's been discussed, based on what's been gathered. But no decisions come there. But again, I can't stress this enough because I know, at least I've seen on the council side, more and more, there are folks that think, okay, well, somehow we're keeping the public from knowing what's going on when you're not. And releasing that information, quite frankly, can have the unintended consequences of what you're trying to accomplish in terms of transparency. Because again, a lot of times, you're giving the public an incomplete picture because there's so many other factors other than just what was discussed in that particular executive session.
And to Ms. Lieber's point, do any of the board members, I mean, because we listed six particular items on here that we were going to discuss here, and to keep this thing moving, because we've got a lot going. Do any of the board members look at these six items? Is there one particular topic out that we have not discussed that you think you would like to discuss? Well, that's why I'm opening it up right now to talk. I mean, it really is our retreat. So there's, Ms. Jewett brought up a very good point on, you know, I think one of the bigger issues that we need to discuss is this agenda. You know, how these items get placed on the agenda and how to, you know, basically, and I'll give you my simple version. It basically takes four. You know, we will have the meetings, and the superintendent will provide me with what she wants to have on, and then I will discuss it. If another board member wants to bring another item up, it takes four signatures. And what I have told most board members, I am more than willing to sign nearly everything, whether I agree with it or not, because if it means, unfortunately, it takes at least four of us. And I think that's where we go back to this relationship-building discussion, that, you know, we have to trust each other, that if there's really an issue that you feel strong enough, you should be able to get four members. I mean, but does that, Ms. Jewett, does that go more to it?
Yeah, I mean, I think what makes it difficult is that we're all living in very different lives and we're all moving in different directions. And to get four board members to align on an agenda item, or at least even just approve it, actually ends up being quite hard to the point where it, sometimes it's just not even worth trying, you know. Sometimes you're just like, I'll just table it. And hopefully, it'll be brought up by default or something like that, which isn't a good solution by any means. But because, you know, I might not be able to get a hold of Kevin, or, you know, and we're not allowed to have these sidebar conversations, and I don't have time to explain why it's so important to me because I've got five million other meetings, that, you know, we end up, things fall through the cracks. And that's what's, that's what's difficult. We don't, it's important that we not have things fall through the cracks because of that.
I completely support that. So the point, also the point is for.
No, no, just sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And to the other point is that there was one particular item on the agenda that you said you would sign off on it, but you wanted to make sure that it was written correctly. Well, it got dropped. So I mean, even though you're saying you're giving me, you know, that, that your vote, and I've given everybody, all the trustees in this room, my vote. No one's taken me up on it that I know of, but I, you know, I trusted that the effort to get things on the agenda are just too hard. And the thirty thousand people that voted for me have been silenced because of this effort. And that's, that's one of the number one things that I'd like the board to work on, is to lower the bar for getting things on the agenda.
And I think, to get to the point on having these discussions, the FOIA requirement, where we hit, what happens with the reply all is you're replying to everybody. So right away, you, if you've got a question, you violated FOIA. But we can still continue, and that's where the agenda does not, restriction of four, doesn't stop four members or three and two, you know. So what I would say in the going forward, it's a lot easier if you send it out to two, three members when you're trying to push an issue. I remember the issue you were talking about on writing, and you're right, it dropped. You and I discussed it, you know, but we, we didn't get it to a point where we should have gotten it, and we should do it next time where it's written, and then we could pass it out and get the votes.
Well, for that.
I don't think getting four votes is hard.
But what effort, what did you say?
I don't think getting four votes is hard for.
I just, I absolutely one hundred percent disagree with you. I mean, this makes this a full-time job for every person. When I call Carol Temple, as an example, Dr. Temple, I call her in the morning and she calls me back in the evening and when I'm not available. This is not working to get four items on the agenda, period. It's, it's, this is not my full-time job, and I'm not getting paid to do this as my full-time job either. I shouldn't be required to do that. And I'd like to ask county council, how many items, how many trustees does it take, or county councilmen, to get on an agenda? We have set our bar too high that we have acquiesced our authority to the bureaucracy.
And I can't speak for, because every council kind of does things a little different. But what I am more than happy to do is I can kind of gather some of that information and provide back maybe some things that you all can consider in terms of how you want to set that, if that is in fact.
Yeah, ours, ours is simple. It takes four to process the paperwork, to write the issue up, and then submit it. Once we have four, we can submit it to, for the.
And I'd like to point out that those four people do not have to agree to support it. They just have to agree to put it on the agenda for discussion.
Right, and, and it only takes four if it goes directly to the board meeting agenda. So staff's going to try really hard not to interject here, but the policy is really clear on getting items on the agenda. For the committee as a whole, it does not take four signers. It's really clear that it's three, the committee person and two other folks. And so as long as you're working in, through committee with your colleagues, and I think it goes back to what Mr. Lassane said earlier, Mrs. Jewett referenced, relationships matter. So you don't have to agree necessarily, but think that the conversation has merit. And so especially if the staff, if it's not a staff-driven item.
Ms. Huggins, or Superintendent Huggins. I mean, reality is, that's not the way the nine of us are working. It takes a lot to actually negotiate that line. And so if, you know, as we should, then why have a bar so high if we should all want to talk about that thing and that's just it? That's something, the voices are silenced by that bar being set so high.
But it's intended to foster collaboration. And so that comes through establishing respect and relationship with other colleagues. I mean, if, if you can't get colleagues to work with you, then I would suggest reevaluating your approach.
The other thing is you got to remember, one. The other thing is you've got to remember why even at three, which I think is an extremely low threshold since there are nine of us, and if you know, after spending, I mean, we've gotten better. I mean, we're not getting home after the gate's locked and we can't get out. It's getting better, but I think the reason you need that three and you've got to keep that threshold is it's got to be somehow relevant and I don't think it's that hard getting three. I think the most important, I think the most difficult thing that we have is writing up an issue that is under our power to actually talk about. And I think that's where we have to watch out, is we can't get involved in administrative issues. It's got to be a policy-driven issue.
So with regard to FOIA, then emailing three to four people is not a FOIA violation because it's under a quorum? Is that how I can interpret that?
Do four because then that person is fifth. You can do three.
Mr. Frampton, did you understand her question?
I do. A quorum is defined under FOIA as a meeting, no matter how chance it even may be, for the purpose of discussing something over which the body has control or authority. So if you're reaching out to four members of your non-member body, that constitutes a quorum. And assuming that that communication is dealing with a matter over which the board has control, then that's an action. So what I tell my council is, we're a seven-member council, I tell them never to have communications to more than three people at a time.
Well, what would it be for us? The same, no more than three people and that includes yourself, so yourself and two others at one time?
That would be three. The way you just described it, Carol, that would have been three and that would be fine for Cal. If we were to go to a board meeting, it'd be you plus three. But if you were going to Cal, you would only need you plus two. But no, that's not true. That's not true at all. I totally mess up.
It's the same.
Feel the same.
Both nine.
Feel the same. I was talking about agenda items, I apologize.
You plus three, four total. Because it's anything, anything less than majority.
Right.
Because we're not, if we were eight, it'd be different.
Well, as our message...
That, that, I mean, a clear understanding of that would be really helpful because otherwise, as Ms. Lieber said, you're trying to call somebody, you're trying to reach somebody, you're trying to text somebody. I mean, it's, it's really hard sometimes to get, get with everybody.
I still, from what I have seen, just in the three years and having looked at a lot of the agenda requests, it still comes in as to, is this something that the board has the power to discuss? So, and that's what I always, you know, Ms. Lieber, you can test me on this one.
Well, and again, we've got enough that it's concerning some members of the board that this should be added to the agenda for the next, the next meeting, the next, well, obviously not the Cal, because there's enough concern here that the voice is being silenced and the bar is set too high.
Well, let me take a different direction. So let's, let's talk about actual issues that can, that we can put on the agenda for the board to consider.
That's a perfect agenda.
I'm sorry?
I said, going through the policy that requires three and four is a perfect agenda item to add to a, than a board meeting.
I agree. Policy issue.
Policy issue, yes.
Yeah. Policy issue. I agree.
But also, what I'm getting from what she's saying or what you're saying, what items can we bring forth to the, to the board on the agenda that we can discuss and not be district operational concerns?
Well, I think, and to take it a step further is how do you get that determined? And maybe Mr. Johnson or Ms. Huggins, because that really, now we've gotten into a point where you think it's not administrative and who do we look to, to figure out what is administrative and what is policy?
That's the coverage.
And if I may segue with that, I think, and again, for time's sake, my slides are there, so you can go through those and if you have any questions, you know, feel free to follow up with me. One of the things I do want to stress is just, again, the importance of understanding where your role as trustees begin and where the role of the supervisor ends, because there are some very unique distinctions. And the reality is, part of your job is challenging because while your superintendent is essentially your CEO of your district, you go to school, well, your children, grandchildren go to school with students, you go to church with the parents, you are a part of other social activities and so again, I'm sure it's not uncommon for you as you're going about just in your daily life, for someone in the capacity of the school, whether they be a teacher, whether they be a parent or what have you, to bring up an issue of concern that involves the school district. What I can't stress to you enough is understanding your role is such that you have to always direct that back to the superintendent or the specific principal to the school. And the reason why that is so important is that that ultimately be an issue that comes before you on appeal and if you put yourself in a position where you're trying to negotiate and solve that problem, that it is going to essentially put you in a position where you're not going to be able to adjudicate it if it comes before the board as a whole in appeal. And so, again, I understand that that's, that can be a hard one because again, you're in the community, folks see you, folks know who you are and they're going to come to you with the various issues and concerns that they have. So that's one of the things I wanted to, I can't stress enough.
I can bring up two perfect examples and I don't mind bringing them up. Ms. Jewett and I live in a district or share a district area in which there is a discussion about building buildings. But that's really, yeah, it's really not a, as I see it, as a policy issue. But it is definitely an issue that since we have constituents that are concerned, we know that we have staff members that can give us those answers that you can give. And I think that's where the request for information, which is in the policy, is directed to the superintendent. And then if you do not get those answers, then you're to come to the chair and then the chairs to try to get the answers or at least me, Captain. On Ms. Lieber's side of it, you're very passionate about the curriculum, but you know, the trouble I struggle with, with the curriculum is our job, even though we oversee and approve the curriculum, it's the staff's job to present it to us, not us to be getting it. And it's hard. I mean, I don't know other, like approving textbooks. I mean, it's, it's, it's a very fine line and very difficult and that's why when I discuss these issues with trustees, I really struggle with it.
Something else I'll touch on right quickly in that vein, well...
Well, really quickly going back, you didn't really answer the question, how many members do you guys need within your board or your, to put something on an agenda? Just out of curiosity.
Well, and again, and I can't give you a definitive answer because like I said, every county has a, their procedure set up. So I could not tell you off the top just what that, what that is going to look like in terms of, in terms of how a particular county sets, determines how something gets on the agenda.
We're going to run over, so what I would like you to do is just present the rest of your slides for this one.
Hold it up for five-minute questions.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and just jump to the end because again, I think we've kind of touched on some of the other things. The last thing I want to talk about, and it goes back again to your relationship and your interaction with the superintendent and clearly allowing the superintendent to deal with staffing and those types of issues that potentially your constituents will try to pull you in. There's a case that I cite, well, I just give the name of it, it's Preston v. Wilson. And from the county standpoint, but again, it is applicable to you all because the relationship is very similar to the, with your relationship with the superintendent for purposes of county, county and the administrator. And the administrator, like your superintendent, you know, is the day-to-day operations CEO of the county. And so what happened in that particular case, without going into a whole lot of detail, is you had a specific council member that wanted weekly reports from the administrator, they wanted the annual financial report as soon as it was done, even though it hadn't been audited and all these kinds of things. And the administrator was doing their best to get the information that was being requested because again, there's no, certainly the information that was being requested as a member of council, they were entitled to. The problem was, is that this then was taking away from the clearly defined duties and functions of the administrator to keep up with these requests. And so because they weren't coming on a weekly basis like this particular member thought that they should be gathering it, they ultimately brought a lawsuit asking the courts to force the administrator to provide this information in the manner that they were requesting. This matter went all the way up to our Supreme Court. And when it's all said and done, our court said, this is not a, this is a discretionary function of the administrator. And while certainly you as a board member, you're entitled to information, you're not entitled to information in a specific form or fashion, any more than any other member that when information is provided, it should be provided to the board as a whole, but you don't have the right to ask the superintendent to cater to specific information you want. And part of this also involved with, one of the things they wanted was, they wanted the records of the legal fees that the county was spending. And that presented some issues because there was a potential for some of the information that they were asking to break the attorney-client privilege. And so the administrator made it very clear that that information could not be released unless council as a whole decided that that information would come specifically to an individual board member. Why do I bring that case up? Ultimately, various iterations of things came out of that. So ultimately, the case slapped that down, but of course, that, as you might imagine, didn't create the best of working relationships with council and administrator moving forward for a number of reasons. And so ultimately, there were several lawsuits that came out of that. They ultimately decided to part with the administrator, they tried to give a severance package, the next council came in and says, y'all can't do that. And so the point is, it costs, when it was all said and done, this thing dragged on in various forms for years and it cost the county a lot of money. And that's the same thing that can happen when you as board members, again, not understanding, annoying the rules that you operate by and what's appropriate and what's not, you could find yourself in a very similar situation. And certainly that does not benefit the school district, when the school district is having to expend funds on legal fees that really should be more directed to what your function is in terms of the betterment of the school district. So, so again, I just wanted to conclude at least my remarks with that report and then, you know, address anything that I can afterwards.
And just so the board members understand, Mr. Lesney's presentation covers all, both A and B. So when we get into the liaisons, I'm assuming you have a slide in on that or do you want to proceed forth with your presentation? We have another, at least another 45 minutes to talk about this. So I don't want you to think that this is over.
Okay. Well, again, I'll pause at this point to see if there are any questions about what I've said at this point.
I'm trying to think what you want to discuss. We laid out the agenda.
I mean, if it was an issue, I mean, like, why are we using a board retreat or something? While we're having the board, we're not discussing much of, much of anything. We're...
Oh. I, after looking at all the surveys and everything, I can say the number one issue that was out there was the liaisons. So, you know, I think we should discuss the liaisons so we all fully understand what the liaisons should be doing, how we should be using the liaisons better. And Michelle, I see you're the only liaison here, so we can talk about...
Before we leave the topic of agenda setting, because this is a part of the agenda, I really, I just want to make a comment and maybe we just need to bring it forward as a formal agenda item, but I really would like to have us reinstate public comments into the committee of the whole meeting. Doesn't have to be at the beginning of the meeting, it can be after discussion, but I think that is important.
And Carol, that's one of the specific, at 3:30, we have three specific policies, BID, BCC, and BE is the one that you're referring to. So I think we'll hold off that discussion until this. I mean, right now, really what we should be, you know, thinking about if we want to discuss as a board, is the liaison committees, you know, the roles of liaisons and the power of a board. But I think the liaisons is probably the most underutilized power that we have.
Misinterpreted in a way, I mean, I don't know if we, any of us really feel like we understand or know what each liaison is doing or when they're meeting or what their, their full job is, you know? Policy liaison, for example, is actually, I think, a pretty important one because that's really our job. And it's hard to know when, how, what, where.
And I think this is a great chance, because I know Ms. Watley was a liaison, but I think the superintendent should tell us more about the staff and what she expects and how the liaisons work with staff and her experience, because she's had the most experience here out of anybody in working with liaisons.
I don't mind leading it off if you want. When we first got elected...
And Dr. Temple, I think you've been a liaison, so step in on this one.
Only for like one meeting.
So when we first got elected, Mr. Kelly was the policy liaison and the way that he handled that role was very controversial. He, because he's got a background in crafting policy and things like that, he worked on it primarily alone. So the following year, I got appointed by the board to be the policy liaison out of background in policy and law enforcement. So what I did in that role, because there was a strong sentiment from, I knew pretty much all board members, to actually have a committee of people working on that particular position rather than it just being through one person. So what I did is I went to the superintendent and asked if we could work with staff as a whole and that's kind of how I handled it. I didn't handle any of it by myself. It was predominantly staff-led and I got to work with almost all of the staff members depending on the policies that were coming forward. So that's my input and I'll just hand that over to Ms. Huggins.
That's, that's perfect. Thank you, Ms. Watley, for that contribution. Ms. Jewett, we are happy to work with the liaisons however we can. We establish agendas with the Miss Leibers, serving as a liaison right now. And Mr. Hollenshead works with Mrs. Thompson to review policies. Ms. Thompson, do you want to describe how that goes? I mean, you might have to.
Often are you meeting with him? What, how are you making decisions on what policy you're looking at? All of the kind of...
Right. So the, the policy reviews are once a month. We have been having them virtually and kind of an in-person and virtual option there. And kind of before I took over the situation, the position here, I think that there had been a decision to kind of go through the policy manual as a whole and try to review each section for needed updates, whether those were updates that needed to be included to match policy to current practice or to match policy to revised law. So there's, it's kind of a, two, two different fields there. It could be so... It could be, so it could be part of this review of the G policies, then the I policies, then the J policies. Or it could be brought up as something like, for example, the live streaming of board meetings, a new law that was passed. It's not necessarily part of the G suite that we're looking at right now, but it is a policy that the new law requires the board to pass. So the policies can kind of come up in different ways, but they come in front of the review. Staff, staff looks at them, makes edits, determines what's appropriate based on current practice, current law. Then it goes to the policy review meeting where it's discussed and talked about, you know, should we change this? Should we fix this wording? And then after that, it's sent to you all. So did I miss anything?
Okay. It's been a really long time, Ms. Stewart, since the CCSD policies have been reviewed as an entirety. And that's what we're trying to lead. But if there are policies that concern trustees, we're happy to put them on the agenda. The SEC agenda, we create collaboratively with Mrs. Lieber in that she can add, she adds items to the agenda she wants to discuss. And we add items that are relevant to the district and we work through that with her as a liaison and bring those items to the board in the Strategic Education Committee portion of the meeting.
And that meets once a month as well?
At least once a month, yes, ma'am.
And who works with?
Mrs. Lieber, Dr. Clamp, the deputy superintendent, and I work directly with Mrs. Lieber because Dr. Clamp oversees the academics in the, in the district and schools. And so we bring in Mrs. Simmons to talk about certain items on the agenda. We bring in Mrs. Roberts. Mrs. Simmons, CAO, Mrs. Roberts, the Associate for Assessment Evaluation, as needed, and/or other staff. For example, there was a recent item that, that the Health Advisory Committee, for example, that Mrs. Simmons was present for, informed by Holly Cutt, who supervises that work in the district. So we engage with staff as needed to make those meetings as meaningful as they can be.
One of the first thing that I did when I became policy liaison, because there was a strong sentiment from board members to create various committees, even before you got elected. I'll allow, I won't speak from his husband, Huggins, but there was concern about doing that. So that's why I ended up just reverting back to, as policy liaison, just meeting with district staff and allowing that policy review, which per policy, the policies are supposed to be reviewed annually anyways. It just hasn't been done. And so that's why you see so many of them.
Can get through them in here.
Yeah, yeah, there's, that's why you see so many of them outdated. Right, right. And so we spearheaded that effort. But I'll allow you to elaborate what you're comfortable elaborating.
Sure, sure. There have been questions about the introduction of various committees here. And, and we have experience, for example, with an operations committee in the past where the board at the time decided that the items that were being addressed in the operations committee inevitably were approved and discussed at the Audit and Finance. And so it takes a lot of staff time. And we're happy to do whatever we need to do to.
Ms. Huggins, if I can interject.
Please.
What we were discussing was switching from a committee of the whole structure to a board governance that had individual committees.
But there was considerable concern that that would take so much of staff time that we've really dedicated to the operations and serving children in the district. Just the meetings that we have with the board already, the committee meetings, you know, do take a good bit of time. A lot of things that you don't see behind the scenes going on. And so there was, in the last board tenure, a question about moving more to committees versus the committee of the whole structure. And senior staff, and I just believe that it would be a significant strain on, on staff time and focus on children. Mr. Burrow, would you add?
Yes, ma'am. And I was here before the committee of the whole was formed. And one of the reasons why the board moved in that direction was that when you schedule each individual meeting separately, it was a big demand actually on the Board of Trustees, rather than having the one committee of the whole. When you have a separate committee meeting at a different time and a different day, every board member wanted to participate and be part of it. And it ended up being really more of their time cumulatively than the single committee of the whole meeting.
Yeah, but at the committee of the whole, we are not discussing, you know, all of the different committee type. We don't have time to go through everything that you would go through in a committee type meeting.
Well, if I step in, I'll give you a perfect example, because I saw you attend on our Audit and Finance meeting.
To attend all of them.
Which, which was deeply appreciated because it shows that you're interested, because you can see the depth of discussion that happens at that committee meeting. Now, think about it, breaking down and, you know, Audit and Finance during budget season could run three hours on a committee meeting.
And part of the sentiment was shared leadership. The committee structure would have allowed all the board members to take on and chair their own committees. But there was considerable pushback from district staff.
And I understand, I understand both sides of it. I just don't feel like we necessarily, especially because it is, it is a, you know, it's hard to even know the difference between, you know, sometimes I come and I'm like, are we at Cal or are we at? You know, and, and that, because they're identical essentially, that it doesn't really feel like it's like a committee. You know, it's not, we're not going over, you know, once a month, making the decision of, okay, well, this Cal, we're going to be really deep diving into nutrition. Or this Cal, we're going to be deep diving into policy. We're not doing that. We're kind of covering a little bit of everything, which means that we never really cover anything deeply the way that a committee will. So there is still a little bit of a, you know, I understand Kevin Hollingshead wanting this operations committee because we don't really go over operations, deep diving at all. We kind of skim it.
Well, and I'd like to address that. Operations is not in the purview of the Board of Trustees.
It's part of oversight.
And I would like to also say that I will admit the only pushback from the different committees was not just administration. I was 100% against it for several reasons. Number one, if we have a struggle to get every trustee to a board meeting and a committee of the whole meeting, how are we going to get trustees to eight different meetings? It's just not humanly possible. It's like already been referenced earlier by Ms. Lieber. It's, it's not a full-time job. If we went to all of those committees, it just wouldn't be humanly possible. And it's not by state instruction, our job as trustees to run the district.
And I think, I think one of the things, and we struggled with it on Audit and Finance. And we've, we played all different types of scenarios. I remember when I was chairman, you know, if I had board members like yourself showing up, I would actually, at the very end, ask if you had any questions.
That would be nice, because not being able to talk is.
Because, and, and the reason was, going to Mr. Burrow's position, other than justifying the cost of an operation, I mean, which falls under the budget. Those are discussed at Audit and Finance, all of them. They really are. I mean, they, anything big, I mean, because you got to remember, we're a billion dollar budget. But anything big, Mr. Brennis and Mr. Burrow do bring it up. But I think it's, and that's why I think the Audit and Finance is very important because of the amount of money we have and that committee works very well. But I do appreciate seeing board members there because and I think, you know, Ms. Watley and I just need to work out a better way of, you know, getting your input in when you sit at a meeting.
Well, we took it up for a vote. And you had committee members. So that wasn't just my, as chair, stopping it. You had committee members who had voiced an opinion about it.
Sure, but I'm just saying, it is, it's, it is one of those powers that we have that ability. And that's, and that's one of the things we do have to respect with Audit and Finance. And even if it's just, if it's just passing a question to one of the committee members, I think that way it'll get answered. But one of our biggest concerns with Audit and Finance is we have some very high-powered people that are taking out a couple hours of their day and are not getting paid and are very, very important in making Mr. Prentice's job, you know, credible.
Well, and I, I do think that, you know, right now, we have an amazing CFO who is thorough and who is accurate. But it's important to know that there may be changes of, you know, in the future. And if we don't have the right amount of oversight there, it's a big budget and things can get hidden in places and things can get misconstrued. And we.
Was the situation when we.
We have to have the right oversight.
I agree with your point, and here's how we do have oversight. Mr. Barrow reports to the superintendent. The superintendent is the board's one employee. So we do have oversight. If we have a concern, we can go to our superintendent.
Well.
Also, I was going to say with Audit and Finance, I mean, I try to sit in on every meeting and because I think it's one of the, because I think it's important. There's several things here I appreciate, I have appreciated when there has been chair or co-chairs of that committee. I think that's been good. And I have appreciated when there have been public comments or at least if I have attended the, the meeting that I appreciate Ms. Watley letting us ask questions. I think that's really important. So, you know, at one point, it was like, well, as a board member, you can't sit in on executive session or you can't ask questions. That, to me, restricts my, my rights.
And my role as a, as a board member.
Yes.
Couple of comments on the Audit and Finance Committee. Right in front of you. The voice, the voice. I appreciate it. I just wanted to say, from a construct standpoint, the Audit and Finance Committee is really designed around the statutory allowances of the role of the board. From the standpoint, you think the budget goes through Audit and Finance Committee, one of the major pillars of your role, all transfers of funding. So once you have that established budget, any transfer of funding of a material amount for capital projects, whenever decisions are being made about capital projects, go through that committee. All of our material procurements go through the committee along with all of the capital and operating budgets on a monthly basis. Any issuance of debt, so any of the funding mechanisms that are employed by the district, transfers of real estate and contractual matters. So everything that kind of fits in those buckets of the board's role runs through that committee. And I appreciate Dr. Temple's point, but I think that, you know, this gets back into what Ms. Lusayn was saying earlier. You know, the committee has to adjudicate a matter in order to make a recommendation to the board. And so if the board is inserting itself in the committee, then that could influence the ultimate recommendation that's made to the board itself. So the committee has a role to make a determination with the two board members, two or three board members, and, you know, six or so community members that are appointed to serve in that capacity to evaluate these matters, make a recommendation to the board. And then, as Mr. Lusayn said earlier, the board can make a final decision that may be following or against what the committee recommends, considering how that decision came to be. But it keeps the lane of operating and governance very clear. Because if you got beyond the transfer of funding or reporting out on the major procurements and things like that, you know, it's just not the board's role by law or policy to make a decision on the award of a contract that goes through, you know, a competitive procurement process. And there's no discussable merit of, you know, selecting the lowest bidder, for example. If all of the qualifications have been met under the terms that were set forth in that procurement package, you know, that, that's an operating decision.
Well, that's understandable, but the Audit and Finance Committee is the only place where we see a lot of the information at, at a lower level, at a, at a level where we can really analyze and make sure that nothing. And so as a board member, I, I disagree. I feel like it's very important to be in the Audit and Finance Committee or in, in that meeting so that I am aware of things. And the fact that I can't really be a part of it makes me less accountable. And, and that's, that's frankly.
And, and I know the reason. We're always afraid of a quorum. And that's why I really truly appreciate when I saw you. And I know Dr. Temple is always there, you know, because it's live stream and she's not there. So you really, you have to be careful with that quorum. So it's, it's almost like, I think, you know, going forward, because hopefully we can accomplish, you know, something today. I think it's really, until we can, you know, continue to talk this among yourselves, it's something that you would need to pass a note to or get to the committee's, committee member's attention. So when they're publicly speaking.
Well, which is why.
Don't get into that.
It's why I extended.
I, I don't know anyone else other than.
But that's why I suggested that if you, if you email them, then I was willing to do that for you, is to pass it to the committee members so that it could be.
In a meeting, I'm not.
Even beforehand or, or even if you sent me a message or something, even if we're in the meeting, I've done it for Dr. Temple. Even if we're in the meeting, I don't mind bringing up what it is that you're concerned about or questions that you have. I'm more than willing to work with you on that.
But also understand that this is the only time we see this, which is why it's difficult when you say, well, we don't need lots of all these, all these extra committees. We already see it at Audit and Finance. Well, Audit and Finance is the only time we see it. So it, it makes it very difficult. And if I can't make it to that Audit and Finance meeting, which I haven't been able to at times because I, because I have another job or five, I miss it, you know, and then I have to, and then I have to watch it on Zoom. And it's two in the morning and I'm tired. And I can't cover it all. So I get that maybe we don't want to overdo anything and I don't want to overcommittee. But we do need to be able to see information at a lower level more than just once, other than, you know, more than just the Audit and Finance Committee. For instance, the procurement of that property, you know.
Yeah, really.
Sorry.
But I'll give you, and I think, and in November, I think I'm going to make a strong recommendation for Audit and Finance. I think it really worked well when we had three committee members on board. And that goes back to trying to share the power. And I think that's where we get back to the liaisons, with us understanding that we need to use our liaisons better. Because I remember when Leah was, you know, on Strategic Ed, you know, or policies on policy. And we, we didn't go through that many policies, but it was back when we made that.
We went through, we were making great progress going through the policy manual.
But we started off slow, but they, what they found out was that as Ms. Huggins has stated, is our policies hadn't been touched in years. So when you see like tonight, I mean, how many policies, granted, they're small changes, but they're just being brought up because they're just so outdated. And it's overwhelming. The policy books, what, how many pages? 700 pages? It's huge. And we're technically the keepers of that book.
Right.
I want to, just going back to the committees, I mean, it's, you have to always reflect on what other boards do. And so to my understanding, because I haven't, I'm not a seasoned board member here, but we have had committees that have been much more operational, I mean, more toward the board than just having the committee as a whole, the Audit and Finance and then the general. They've had things like the Operations Committee, the Strategic Education Committee. So we're, so we as a board are actually, again, acquiescing the authority that other boards take. And I, and I definitely think that we should have some reflection on how it's done nationwide and, and not where you're hearing, oh, well, Charleston operates differently than the rest of the state does. Because when I talk to other boards, they don't do what we do. That includes the agenda item.
And it goes back, I think you missed the justification. We were having that kicked back because at one time, we had considered getting rid of Committee of the Whole. Because what you're, what you're asking for is that's what would happen. Committee of the Whole would disappear and we would have nothing but committee meetings. I'm not really, you know, I, I agree that all of our operational issues that we have any say in are handled at Audit and Finance. I definitely, so then I think Strategic Ed, you know, I, and as we go into this year, as we look at the new social studies standards, I, I think there's going to be a lot of discussions, you know, at that point, trying to get input and data. lot of discussions, you know, at that point, trying to get input and data. And that's one of those things I've never understood. I've always struggled with our responsibility to curriculum. And you can step in, Ms. Huggins, and you can step in too, because I really struggle with curriculum.
Well, I just, in some, some ways, going to other conventions, talking to other boards and how they do it, you know, we can look at the South Carolina School Board Association and look to see how they're structured. But I know when the legislators do, they, they taken a national analysis of how other boards are structured and whether they're functioning and how they function. So it would be worthwhile to see that we're not just operating in our own silo.
But I still go back, you're one of the few liaisons that's here. Kevin's not here. How would you see us better reacting, working with you as a liaison? Because we discuss what a liaison is supposed to be doing. Didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Well, I, I think, going back to, I'm just trying to reflect to what happened in December about conversations and about, you know, sharing what had been provided and what my responsibilities are. They were just not clearly defined. We don't have anything written about what the Strategic Education Liaison is supposed to be, that's not been defined by the board. And it's okay, it's okay. We haven't defined it. As well as, I don't know that we have defined the policy liaison in any, in any policy.
And as we, or at least my opinion, sole opinion, is that you as the Strategic Ed, if I had an issue that I wanted you to discuss so that we're all not attending this meeting, but then again, I'll ask Ms. Huggins, I mean, what has been the policy of having more than one board member at a staff meeting? Like a Strategic Ed?
Ms. Barrowey?
I, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't. We're happy to meet with trustees about any matter in small groups like we've done Friday and just today, in fact. So.
Because as I, this is your meeting. We're just attending, watching your meeting.
We, we are happy to entertain board members as part. Mrs. McKinney, for example, has attended two SECs, I think, one at Mrs. Lieber's request. So we're happy to entertain outside of a quorum, whatever the board desires.
Well, I will have to clarify in respect to Ms. Superintendent Higgins, Ms. Superintendent, is that this SEC, the Strategic Education Committee is working marvelously, but quite a struggle in the beginning because the definition of how it was supposed to work, I think we kind of, the first meeting sat and looked at each other, like, who defines the agenda? So, but we have, we've collaborated, and it's, it's working. But, you know, I'm just a board member for three and a half more years, or for that matter, six months on, until the new board chair is selected. So I just think that it needs some diligence to define it correctly.
I'll be very, very honest that I don't know, outside of a collaborative agenda, how the committee could work any, any differently. Mr. Prentice, I don't, do you have feedback on that?
Yeah. So if you think about, there's kind of two pathways here. If you didn't have Committee of the Whole, you would have a Strategic Education, I mean, this is hypothetical, but you could have a Strategic Education Committee that maybe consists of three members of the board. And, you know, the chair of that committee would be either appointed by the committee itself or designated by the chairman of the board. And they would come together and discuss Strategic Education matters and make recommendations to the board at its regular board meeting, which would result in a Strategic Education Committee meeting being publicly advertised and held in the boardroom once a month, or however, frequently ahead of the regularly called board meeting. We're essentially doing that with the Committee of the Whole, and having who would serve as the chair of the committee be the agenda liaison for Strategic Education, and then bring those matters to that piece of the Committee of the Whole meeting, where then instead of having a committee, the whole of the, the board takes involvement in discussing those matters and making a recommendation to the regular board meeting. So I guess it's just what, you know, if you look in Policy BDE, it talks about the role of liaisons for Strategic Ed and policy. What would we want to change there in terms of how that would function?
Well, as an example, I don't bring agenda items to the COW without my three, without three board members agreeing to them. So what we might bring up in the Strategic Education Committee does not get pushed through. Only the superintendent's agenda gets pushed through.
Ms. Lieber, that's not accurate.
Okay.
That's not accurate. The superintendent's agenda doesn't get pushed through.
My apologies for saying it that way, then.
No, you don't need to apologize. I appreciate that, but you don't need to apologize. The committee is structured so that you might bring forward ideas. And the way the policy reads, it asks you to find one trustee who, who will sign on with you, and, and one more. And if you collaboratively discuss something with us, I'm not aware of an item that you've asked Dr. Clamp and me to bring to the agenda that we haven't. We can certainly discuss that offline. We try to take care of administrative items in the committee meeting to prevent a lot of public discourse about items that might not be of interest to the full board. And so we're happy to add any item to the agenda that follows the policy. Again, it can come to the SEC for discussion. And we can advocate with other trustees, although it's not our role to help find folks to sign on with you. But I just want to respectfully note that we work really collaboratively, I believe, with, with all trustees to do what we can to support the work that each of you wants to see.
Mind you, again, I do say that the Strategic Education Committee right now is functioning, but I'm just concerned another liaison gets appointed, and it's, and maybe, you know, years go by that it still is, it hasn't been defined.
And I think the other thing, Ms. Lieber, I think, once again, it goes back to what staff discusses at their meeting on Strategic Education, is not necessarily everything would be covered under a policy that would even be a board policy. So a lot of times, what I anticipate the, because with policy, as Ms. Watley can correct me on it, nearly everything they talked about was a board action, or had potential board action. But, you know, Ms. Huggins, you can correct me, I don't think at Strategic Ed, not everything you talk about would be board, you know, actionable. But that's not saying that the liaison shouldn't be reporting to the board that the staff is doing this.
Well, that's just a function of the policy liaison, though. As we were revising the policies, it was my job as a liaison to go over and ask a lot of questions and get a really clear picture as to the direction the staff wanted to craft those policies so that I could then bring that and articulate that to the board as a whole. And then as the board as a whole, we then interjected our own desires and thoughts and how we wanted the, the language to read. And so that we could then work collaboratively together in crafting the policy for governance. But it was all collaborative. There was nothing that I did as an individual that I thought, this needs to go. Now, the one time that I did do that was with Gavin's Law. But again, it wasn't me trying to direct the, the district in a way that I felt like it needed to go. What I did is I reached out to somebody that I know is an expert, and I asked her for recommendations. And then she gave me two names, Dee Norton, and then the Child Advocacy from M U S C. And then we met collaboratively as.
And we worked together.
L Simmons, Dr. Clamp.
And it's very productive, as I recall.
So I, you know, that, that's one thing that I can't reiterate enough is, as I, my personal views and opinions were never interjected in my position as a public official. It, I allowed the, the staff to direct it, and then I brought it all to the board, and then we discussed it together. But I, just like I do with Audit and Finance, when we discuss everything in that committee, I bring it all. I try to do a summary of everything that's discussed at Audit and Finance, so that I can then inform all of you, this is what was discussed, this was the, these are the red flags that I see. And then, so that way we can all collaboratively craft everything together.
When do you bring that to us?
At the COW, and then Mr. Grabowski handles it at the regular board member, or at the regular board meeting.
Usually the way it is, it's at the COW meeting, that's when the, because it's informational. So at the COW meeting is really when the liaison brings up the issue.
This year.
Because when it gets to the board, it's an actionable item, so there's debate on the action, and then we vote. We try to keep the information, otherwise we'll be there all night. Or to Ms. Lieber's point, we're just repeating the same, or your point over.
But that, that's the change that's happened this year. Prior to this year, with the Audit and Finance items, we discussed all of it at COW. But, and, and that change didn't even come from me. That actually came from the.
We're running up to some time limits. We've been doing it for, Ms., Dr. Temple, do you, I'm gonna give you last say. Do you have any comments you'd like to end before we break?
Well, I, I like the Committee of the Whole structure because I think that we, it gives us an opportunity to discuss a lot of different things. I don't see that we physically can have all, all different kinds of committees. And I have seen the board when they had a bunch of different committees. And I, I think, in my, in my view, the Committee of the Whole is working pretty well. I think with the liaisons, I think it might be good to have co-liaisons of, of each of them, like two people for Strategic Ed, two people for policy. That would, that would include some shared leadership and ownership and, and involvement and, and at least maybe, you know, opportunity for different points of view. And I guess I would say, like, in the short time that I was Strategic Ed, I found, you know, we, I knew that we had a lot of goals. And we came up with a calendar for how to approach, you know, checking in on the goals. Because that is, our oversight is what is happening with student achievement. And so I, I think that has worked really well. I appreciate with the, you know, reports that come to us during COW about, you know, what's, what are our students doing? And, you know, we can ask about any special programs that we want to know more about. So those would be my suggestions.
Yeah, and just maybe having more of a follow-up from the liaisons with the rest of the boards, because I don't get to be a liaison. So I don't get to be in any of the meetings, and I don't get to know, unless it's.
I think it's a perfect recommendation, Coke, because it works on, you know, Audit and Finance, you have at least two. And it says, that's, the charter says, at least two. And I thought it worked real well with three.
Policy change.
Yeah. We changed the policy up to three. So I, I think it's something we should consider in November as the co-liaisons, because what happens, and that's, it happened this week. I mean, Ms. Watley was deathly ill, and, you know.
Glad I had.
Hey, we're up against a hard break. Let's take a five-minute break, and then we'll go into the wonderful Rules of Roberts.
Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll go into the wonderful rules of Roberts. This is really one of those ones that if someone has a general question, it may be a good way to start, but he has prepared some areas that he thinks we should rely on. But with that being said, I don't see anybody jumping in.
I will try to address some concerns that I earlier made, make some preliminary statements. And that is, first of all, defining my role. I'm not your lawyer. You have able and competent, well-experienced counsel to handle your legal questions. I am your parliamentarian, which means that I do not rule on parliamentary matters. I am asked advice on parliamentary matters and I'm consulted on parliamentary matters. However, the ultimate decision as to whether or not my advice is heated, followed, or ignored is up to your chairman. He is the one that rules on parliamentary questions and matters of procedure. And your right is to appeal his decision to the body if you believe he is in error. So a lot of people say, well, we'll let the parliamentarian rule on this issue. That's not what happens, and that is not my role. So oftentimes, however, it is my obligation to interject myself, and I try to do so tactfully, although I'm not a very tactful person, to interject myself if I do believe that the board is error, is making an error of law, or is somehow disrespecting the substantial rights or substantive rights of another board member. It is my job to interject when I deem it appropriate on those bases. So frankly, I try not to answer or interject myself unless I'm asked, because that is my role. There's been some discussion about your policies. There's been some discussion about Roberts rules. There's been some discussion about state law. And you may even have some customs that you generally follow. I just want to outline very quickly how it works and how it legally works and what your duties and responsibilities are. With respect to state law, first of all, you must follow state law before you follow anything else. Next in priority are your policies. So your policies come before Roberts rules. Your policies can disagree with or be contrary to Roberts rules. And if they are, then your policies control. Next in priority and hierarchy is Roberts rules. And last, your matters of custom. So if you take the top, you must follow state law. Secondly, you must follow your policies. Thirdly, in the absence of any of those two guidances, you follow Roberts rules. In the absence of all three of those, you follow custom. So in particular, you have a policy, for example, that says with respect to your consent agenda, also known as a consent calendar, that it takes three members of your body to object to a matter on your consent calendar. That is your policy. Roberts rules says only one member needs to object to a matter on a consent agenda or consent calendar to require it to be removed from the consent agenda and be taken up separately. So that's an instance in which your policy is frankly more restrictive than Roberts rules are. Because Roberts says one member can say, I object to that matter being on the consent agenda. So that's generally the hierarchy of how matters go with respect to following those different priorities. The proper way to make a motion is you make a motion, you second it. The chair is supposed to restate the motion. Debate then follows. I cannot tell you the number of county council meetings I've been to and participated in, when a motion is made and then they go immediately into debate. There's a real practical reason why you don't do that. You don't even know if the motion will get a second. Why in the world are you going to beat a dead horse to death if it doesn't even get a second? And frankly, I've seen motions made at county council meetings in which the motion dies for lack of a second, yet they've spent 30 minutes beating that horse. It never got a second. So motion made, second, chair restates the motion, and then debate takes place. It works the same way if you amend a motion. The First Amendment to a motion is known as the primary amendment. If you wish to amend that amendment, it's known as a secondary amendment. That's the only two amendments that are allowed. You cannot make a third amendment to an amendment of a motion. And you, of course, vote on those amendments in reverse order. You would vote on the secondary amendment first, the primary amendment second, main motion last, as it may have been amended by either the primary or the secondary amendment. What happens, and this happens commonly at least at county council meetings, haven't seen it happen a lot here, but I've only been to two or three meetings. I'm sure it'll come up. What happens if you say, I just don't want to deal with this right now. I just don't want to take this up right now. The most commonly misused motion, when that is the intent of a member or of the body, is to lay something on the table. That ain't what you want to do. You place something on the table if you want to take something out of its turn that's of a more urgent nature. For example, in your agenda, you have Mr. Lassane coming up. You're paying him by the hour. You want to get him in and out. So you may lay a matter that you're taking up currently on the table to allow him to address the body. Once he leaves, you take it from the table. Now, if you do not take the matter from the table at the same meeting, or if you do not take it from the table at your next regularly scheduled meeting, the main motion is gone. It is not still on the table, it's gone. So a member would have to make the motion again if they want to bring it up at a later meeting. The second methodology is to postpone indefinitely. I'm not a real big proponent of postponing indefinitely. Because frankly, I don't know how it gets back on an agenda. I guess it's then up to the superintendent and the chair to place it on the agenda or your committee of the whole to place a matter back on the agenda. But that is the problem if you merely postpone it indefinitely. Because you don't know when you're going to take it back out. It basically kills the motion. The other methodology, if you don't want to deal with it right now for any number of reasons, is to postpone to a definite time. That postponement to a definite time can be made to take it up later in the meeting. Or it can be made to take it up at your next regularly scheduled meeting. You cannot, however, move to postpone to a definite date later than your next scheduled meeting. But let's say you need more information. You need staff to gather more information for you before you feel comfortable voting on a motion that's before you. Then it's certainly the appropriate time to postpone to the next meeting, which would be allowable under Roberts rules. What happens if you have second thoughts? And that's what Mrs. Jarrett.
Jewitt.
Jewitt, I'm sorry. I've had cataract surgery, but I still don't see that well. That Ms. Jewitt has brought up, and she said, I think, to kind of paraphrase your question, what if we voted and we've acted on something and I really wasn't either comfortable with it or perhaps I've gotten more information now, but we've already voted on it? How do I handle that? Well, Roberts rules doesn't give you much comfort. Roberts rules puts two specific requirements on a motion to reconsider. The first is you must be on the prevailing side of the vote. That may not be too hard to accomplish. But the second one is you've got to bring it up the same meeting. Now, I can tell you that a body that I work with regularly, have been for 36 years, customarily have allowed reconsideration of motions at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So my suggestion would be if that is something you really would like to have, the ability to do, then change your policy. Because policy trumps Roberts rules. If your policy is different than Roberts rules, you can adopt a policy that changes Roberts rules and allow a motion to be reconsidered, a matter to be reconsidered. Again, I don't think there's any, I think there's this purpose for having only a member on the prevailing side make a motion to reconsider. Otherwise, you've got the unhappy camper wanting to always reconsider something. Okay? So I think it's appropriate to leave the requirement of a person on the prevailing side making a motion to reconsider a matter that transpired at the immediately preceding meeting. But maybe allow a motion to be reconsidered at your next regularly scheduled meeting, but not thereafter. If you don't do that, then Roberts rules says you're kind of stuck. The third methodology to use, and that was done at your last meeting, is a motion to rescind or to amend a previously adopted action. That can be done at any time. You don't have to be on the prevailing side. It brings the matter back up for consideration. And frankly, even if you make the motion to alter or amend, you don't have to vote in favor of the difference or the change that you sought. It may be that you just want more explanation. Now, both a motion to reconsider and a motion to rescind or amend a previously adopted matter can only be used if the matter is still what I'll call executory. Meaning that a party has not changed their position as a result of the vote that was previously taken. Now, an example, simply, simple example, I like simple examples. The board has voted to award a contract, let's say, to Frampton Construction to build a school. You hear later on that maybe that was not, there was not funding for it, let's say. Whoa, I didn't realize we didn't have the money for it. Or there was some other reason why you want that vote to be either reconsidered or rescinded or amended. If the contract's already been signed, it's too late. Okay? It's no longer what's known as executory that is waiting to be performed. So so long as it's not been that additional step and people have not changed their positions, basically, a motion to reconsider is appropriate. A motion to rescind or to amend a previously adopted matter can be made. And again, you might want to consider a policy change. The last thing I want to talk about commonly, that may commonly come up, is the chairman has called for a vote and you voted. And then you say, golly, I misunderstood the motion. Or, golly, I really didn't mean to vote in favor. I meant to vote no instead of yes. When can you change your vote? Before the vote is announced, that is before the chair says six in favor, one opposed, you can change your vote. Doesn't require anybody's agreement. You can change your vote until the vote is announced. What if the vote has already been announced and the chairman says the vote's four in favor? Well, let's use your board, five in favor, four opposed. But you just kind of wanted to see how the vote went. Because you really wanted to vote no, but you see the no's didn't have enough. So now you want to change your vote. I have seen that before in a public body that I represent. So if that happens, but the vote has been announced, the only way you can change your vote is with unanimous consent. That means all the people on your body present and voting allow you to change your vote once the vote is announced. Lastly, if the vote has been announced and you've moved on to other business, it's too late to change your vote under any circumstance. So that's really the highlights of what I wanted to cover. The common things I see, the common mistakes or misinterpretations that I see. And happy to expound on any of it or try to answer. Any questions you may have about specifics or hypotheticals?
So I just want to go back to the, when only one person brought an agenda item and there was debate and only that person voted in favor or not in favor of that. So the public is owed a transparent debate in the public eye. And I'll give you guys an example of what happened on county council. And this is a way to kind of determine who is on the board. Is that one of the motions was, shall George Washington, the resolution to George Washington be the founder of our country? And he did not get a second. Well, that can kind of tell you, either they didn't understand what the motion was or that the other eight were not in favor of George Washington being the founder of this country. So those kind of things should be allowed so that the public can understand who sits in these important seats.
So you're asking the question, what happens if a member makes a motion that they think is- that they think is germane, is within their power and authority to make, but the motion does not receive a second?
Well, whether it receives a second or does a second, but the, the fact that the discussion should proceed. And I'm saying it mocking the fact that somebody brings an agenda item and they're the only person that gets to vote in favor of that is transparency to the public. Because we were all elected to present our opinions about something. And it's not necessarily to be mocked that only, you know, maybe it was eight to one. But the fact is that discussion came up and it shouldn't have been squelched because it is the public to understand who the nine people are that sit on this board.
If I can provide a little context in the situation that Ms. Lieber is referencing, it's my understanding that that particular council member, um, the way, the tactics that they went about it, they were not able to get the support of the other council members and that's why they were standing alone.
But I, I just clarification. A motion was made, but it didn't, that motion didn't receive a second. That's why it died.
But it's still.
She's wanting to be able to discuss a motion without a second.
They didn't have a second.
Yeah, I don't know of any procedure, parliamentary procedure or policy procedure of any public body that allows discussion on a matter that never gets a second.
Well, what I'm trying to say is that the, even, I, I, that was just an example. That wasn't actually to like clarify that that vote should have gotten a second before discussion. I'm just saying that the mere fact that if, even if there's going to be, you know, the motion gets second, whatever, that there's going to be discussion.
Correct.
The public should, it should be transparent to understand who the nine of us are.
And I think, I think that's what Mr. Frampton, you know.
Yeah.
And I'm as guilty as anybody else. You know, I will say the question before the board is blah, 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 blah. And then I'll ask for a motion. I'll receive the motion. We'll ask for the second. Now, as I am stand corrected with Mr. Frampton, I should restate the question again. And what that allows for is time for people to make a motion to amend.
It does, and particularly I've seen.
Cause once you got the debate started, there's no motion to amend.
There, there's, it's off, you know, simple motions. You know, I have a motion to appoint so and so to the whatever board, okay? You know, I think it's oftentimes, although Robert's rules doesn't say you can say, you can dispense with certain procedures because it's faster, all right? I can tell you that, that Dorchester County Council almost never restates the motion merely because it's, it's a fairly simple matters. What happens is sometimes to get complicated though. I think about the first meeting I attended in which we talked for 15 minutes about an amendment to add three more school namings merely to go to the board from the Cal, uh, to be dealt with as one instead of separately by separate votes.
Welcome to our first year in office.
Thank you, ma'am. I understand. Uh, but sometimes amendments get complicated. Therefore, that, that's when it becomes particularly important for the chair to restate or to state the amendment. So there's clarity, so that people don't get caught in the situation or perhaps voting for something that was not clear or did not quite understand the question. And secondly, if the amendment passes, to clearly restate the main motion as amended to be voted on. Uh, because things get complicated sometimes. Particularly if there are two amendments to the main motion. And you've, you know, either not adopted or adopted the secondary amendment. Then you move to the primary amendment. You may or may not adopt it. And then you're trying to guess, okay, which amendment applies, which doesn't apply? And it's best to get clarification of that by restatement of the main motion as amended.
And that, that's really what it is, is asking the chair for clarification.
It is.
It's a point of order.
Well, and I think it also gives time for everybody to be able to speak at the, at the same time, because if you don't repeat it, then essentially you can be the first person to talk. But if you repeat it, then it, everybody has, you know, the same, the same ability, I guess, after.
I, I think this board has been pretty good. I know Ms. McKinley was very good at it too, and allowing, once we had a second, there was always debate. I don't think we ever went straight to a vote.
I, I noticed the timer y'all use, which is great. Okay, I know your policies provide for that. Just for my clarification, do you always take discussion in a certain order of certain trustees? Is whoever wants to be recognized?
Well, I, I, what I've been trying to, and it's funny, I've been talking to Ms. Watley about this, her time, and with, definitely with Ms. McKinley about that. What I'm really trying to get is back to the position of let's have a debate. So really the first question that comes out of my, I'd like to come out of my mouth. Does anybody have a question? And let them ask it first, because I think it's important. And then, once we've gotten past that, I think the trouble with our timing is you've got two minutes. And it would be really nice, but I know it's to be way too complicated to allow one minute and let them to come back and revisit it. But, but you know, the challenge is.
You're, you're talking about having banter, which is one thing I wanted to do. But it also depends on the climate. This year, we've had a board that's a little bit more willing to openly discuss things. But that first two years, we, we had a lot of hostility. And so it was, um, I mean, we would take 45 minutes just to get the agenda approved so that we could move on with the meeting.
So, so the following question would be, is anybody opposed to it? And then if somebody is opposed to the motion, then they have the opportunity to get up and speak. And then, once you've got the people that have laid out the opposition, then people that are for it. But what I would hope our board would, what I see a lot is, um, sometimes it's just making a general statement about it to where it's, you know, it really, it's just, we should be going to the merits of what the motion is. And I think the first is obviously clarification, because as Ms. Jewitt's brought up on many occasions to me, you know, I, I don't really understand what this motion, you know, what is the particulars of this motion? But then the next priority would definitely go, somebody's got some opposition to it.
Well, maybe what, in terms of what you're asking is maybe not to say any opposition to it, um, or the other word might be any concerns about the motion or the action. Because you might not be opposed to it, but you might have concerns about it.
Go, go ahead.
My question was, is there a most, a more efficient way to handle comments or questions after a motion is made?
I, I can only tell you that Robert's rules doesn't seem to say anything about the best way, or here's a way. I can tell you that at, at county council meetings, the chairman merely says, is there any debate? And you know, a member will raise their hand and ask to be recognized. He'll recognize that member. We do not have time limits on debate with respect to members of county council. Except, you know, how sleepy they get. Uh, so our meetings often tend to be long.
Before we move to a different item, while we're kind of in this same, um, realm of discussion and debate, would you also cover a point of personal privilege?
Personal privilege is, is, and people, I, I had a count. And it's funny how people who serve in the legislature, you know, they have their different rules there. They don't, they don't even have Robert's rules in the legislature. They have all kinds of weird rules, okay? And, and this county council member, I loved him to death, uh, would say matter of personal privilege. Okay, well, personal privilege is really an issue of, hey, it's too hot in here. I need the air conditioner turned up, all right? That's a matter of personal privilege. It's personal to the member. It's a matter, it's generally a matter of comfort for the body. Okay? Doesn't require second, there's no debate, there's no, I mean, you can interrupt, you can do anything you want to. Because it's really, it's, 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 it's geared towards a matter of.
Is there a timeframe or a time limit?
Raise it anytime. You can interrupt, speak.
Like, once you have personal privilege, are you limited by time?
Well, I hope it wouldn't take too long to say, I want the air conditioner turned up. Or I need to go to potty, okay? You'll see me raise a matter of personal privilege, you go potty sometimes.
I, I think the one that is point of order that.
Point of order means you, you want to bring you back, bring everybody back to the agenda. That's what a point of order is. It's, it's also what, what people often misconstrue that is you're out of order. That's not what a point of order is. A point of order is come back to where we are on this list of things we're supposed to cover because we've gotten too far afield uh, from where we're supposed to be on our agenda.
So what?
It means really order of the day is what it means.
Of course, does a trustee have if there's something that they want to say? And it, through the course of debate, they haven't had the opportunity to say what it is that they want to say?
You can move to extend debate. In other words, I need more time.
Well, what about, so.
Does that get voted on?
Yes, ma'am. It's a two thirds vote, if I'm not mistaken.
I mean, I think that's, I was about to ask, following up on, you, you said, you know, if you have something that you want to bring back, um, to the table, when, when are you supposed to do that?
A motion to reconsider?
No, the table issue.
I'm sorry, to extend debate?
No, the table, if you table something.
Yeah, so you were, you, you know, you covered a few things and you were intentionally covering, um.
Playing on the table?
After a vote has happened, then.
When can you bring it back up?
When, when do you bring it back up? To be able to do all these steps that you, you said, we've got four options here. But when do I execute on those options? And, and how do I start that?
Well, the, for example, the motion, motion to re, I'm sorry, the motion to rescind uh, was made because I was, I, I was consulted and I attend the agenda meetings because Robert's rules does say it's important for the parliamentarian to know what's coming up on an agenda, to see if there's anything that he might be called upon to rule on. Okay? So I've been included on agenda meetings. And the question that was posed, what do we do with this matter? All right? So I gave a method that, that I believed appropriate to take care of that FF policy issue. Okay? So it was placed on the agenda by the chair. I don't know who puts things on the agenda. I don't do that. I think maybe it was circulated amongst the members.
Right, but so then do you, if it has to then be put on the agenda, then does that mean that then in order to be able to put in that you want to do that, then you have to actually have four votes to be able to put it on, or four people to be able to put?
To rescind a matter of a motion which has to be on the agenda. Yes, ma'am.
Which would then have to have four members.
It comes back to the same issue of how do you get something on your agenda? And I'm hearing that there seems to be a lot of consternation about that issue. I can tell you, the county council rules and procedures require a majority of council to place a matter on the agenda that's not placed on the agenda by the, by the chairman of county council and/or the administrator.
So if.
So it's even more cumbersome.
Can I ask a question? So if, if what happened to me is during the vote came out and I realized that the information that the board members were voting on was maybe incomplete, was there anything I could have done to put a pause and restate?
When did you, when did you, when did you realize that? At the same meeting?
Yeah, during the same meeting.
You could make a motion to reconsider.
But I'd have to vote in favor then to do that.
You'd have to be, well, let me tell you that this is the way it works for a motion to reconsider. And this is a little confusing sometimes too. And frankly, oftentimes I have to sketch this out, okay, for my counsel. So, uh, same meeting, you think, gosh, I'm not sure what was done was correct for any number of reasons. Okay, whatever the reason. So you would make a motion to reconsider, assuming you were on the prevailing side. Only the prevailing side, that's correct. Okay? So assuming you were on the prevailing side, you would make a motion to, you would, what the motion would actually be was, Mr. Chairman, I would move to reconsider the vote that was taken earlier to approve the contract being awarded to XYZ Corporation. Assuming that motion gets a second, okay? Prevailing side, second to the motion. And at the same meeting, assuming the motion to reconsider passes, then the motion would then be presented to the body again. The motion to reconsider is the motion, I mean, the motion now before us is to award the contract to XYZ Corporation. And you could then debate that. Or ask for information of staff.
For the clarification, the need, I'd have to get a second before I could clarify why I wanted to reconsider.
Well, there is, there is, the, the Robert's rules does basically say you're allowed to give a short introduction to your motion. But that is not debate. It's not to be considered a debate and it should not be debate. So if you could say something, for instance, Mr. Chairman, I'm a little concerned that I did not have the correct information when we voted toward the contract. Therefore, I would move that we could reconsider that vote. That's okay. But if you get too far beyond that, in my opinion, as your parliamentarian, to say, Mr. Chairman, let me tell you why we shouldn't have voted for XYZ Corporation. I believe that staff did not tell me about this or this or this or this. And I think that's wrong and I didn't hear anybody discuss that. Therefore, I move to reconsider. You've gone too far. That's debate and the chair would, should call you down for that.
So just thinking, so let's just say that the vote happened and then, and I voted in favor. And now, for whatever it's worth, it takes me to muster some time to like put my thoughts.
Sure.
And then we're on to a second agenda, another agenda. And then bringing that in, I'd like to make a motion.
To reconsider.
To reconsider.
You can do that so long as somebody does, does not have the floor.
Okay.
You cannot interrupt a speaker, but you can, so long as the floor is yielded.
You've talked a lot about motions that fail and die or taken off the table and everything. What's the proper procedure to bring that motion back up? Is it, is to?
I would move, yeah, if it's been on, placed on the table for an urgent matter, to be taken up out of order. For example, the motion would be, I would move to take the motion that was placed on the table earlier off the table.
But if we, let's say a motion has died for whatever reasons. And we go into another cycle. So basically, we're starting all over again, another board meeting cycle.
Your next regularly scheduled meeting, because you're not a continuing body.
Four more, you know, members would sign off, we would get it on the agenda. But it's not like the motion ever, I mean, the motion has the possibility of being resurrected.
Certainly, for example, a motion that you have tabled, a main motion that you have tabled, that you have not taken up at the same meeting and you failed to take it up at the next meeting, that main motion is gone. That does not stop somebody from bringing up the motion again, fresh, just the same way the first one was brought up originally.
Well, and, but then, so you said you added the rescinding their vote to the agenda, but then also you said you can't change after that meeting, ever.
Can't change a vote after that meeting? I don't know that I said that.
You said changing your vote.
That, that's your personal vote. This is your, I should probably be a little more succinct. The last thing I discussed was a member changing their personal vote.
Right.
Which means.
You can't change it after that meeting, ever.
You cannot change your personal vote, but you can if a matter has been brought back up. You're not changing your, your.
But Policy FF was done, correct? So how does that happen?
Not sure what you mean by Policy FF. I said, Policy FF was given.
Two weeks ago, you were in the agenda meeting and you said add it to the agenda.
What happened was the vote that was taken on, on the 28th of April, is I recollect, which was a vote to refer that policy to the liaison committee, was rescinded. Just as if, that, that means it's just as if that vote never took place. So where did Policy FF? So where did Policy FF, where was Policy FF at that time? Before that vote was taken to send it to the Liaison Committee? It was before the board, and it had already been given one reading. Therefore, it's back before the board, whenever it is placed on an agenda. And it would be before the board for a second reading. Because we're merely putting it back where it was before the April 28th vote took place. Because that's the vote you rescinded. Does that answer your question?
I guess, one person rescinded, or everybody was rescinding?
The vote was unanimous to rescind the vote.
We all voted.
Four people put it on the agenda.
Right, but it's still, all we're talking about is that. That policy will be coming up again for a second reading. So you're, we're just talking about the motion and it proceeding its way to a final vote. It is not, there's not been any conclusive debate on it or vote on that policy. So all we were doing was trying to get it back on track for discussion and a final vote. And that's why I was asking him, you know, so we have these motions that somehow, you know, get messed up and they go off into no man's land. What are our options? I mean, and one option is just start all over again.
Yes, sir.
The reason FF was kind of interesting is that needed a first and second reading, so you actually needed two board meetings versus a lot of our actions. Are just, you know, one vote.
Yeah, so that policy goes back on your agenda for a second reading at this, because it's been given first.
Let's, can we talk about the consent agenda, because I think there's an awful lot of confusion about consent agenda, how it gets set. How do you remove items, you know, because like, we're going into a Cal meeting tonight. And I'm sure there are going to be some items that. Because we've got an awful lot of policy items that are really just HR grammatical errors that, you know, bills. Found after 10 years and has decided to correct, or, you know, anything. So a lot of those items may be put on the consent agenda at the Cal, as I understand it, and then.
Then it's forwarded, then those consent items are forwarded to the board.
So now. We come to the board agenda. And I think this is where we get some confusion, and I think it's really important we get this clarified. The time to remove those consent agenda items. It's come out of Cal, it's been put on a consent agenda, is when you're approving the agenda.
At the board meeting.
At the board meeting. Yeah, what Robert Rules says really about consent agendas, and from what I've seen, only being here twice, I'm not sure. First of all, it says that basically they're for non-controversial matters, okay? So let's say you've got seven non-controversial matters. So you've placed them on a consent agenda, perfectly fine. Then, I know, Mister Chairman, that at the call of the meeting, at the start of the meeting, you asked for approval. Of the agenda and the consent agenda, as I understand it.
Correct.
Hearing no objection to your consent agenda. It then becomes your consent agenda. However. In my opinion, that is not a vote in favor of those items. It is just a consent agenda has been adopted. And no objection by three of your members according to your policy. Robert Rules says you can have one member object to a consent agenda. So hearing no three objections to your consent agenda, that is then your consent agenda. Now, I believe. You need a policy. That says all consent agendas will be taken up as one item. Because I don't think you have a policy that says that.
We've made that motion before in the past, that when we've adopted the agenda, we also approve consent agenda items.
I just didn't hear it, and that may be me.
This has been in the past.
Okay, I did not hear a motion to adopt, to approve all items on the consent agenda. I've heard a motion to approve the consent agenda, which means to me, as a parliamentarian. That there's been no objection to an item being on the consent agenda.
Right.
But that is not the approval of all of the items.
Yeah, it's in the wording.
I think we've run into that problem, which was, all we've really done is approved the agenda, and I've always.
Not the items.
Right, not the items, that's why I always thought. When you got to the consent agenda items, is when you should be voting on them.
We've even worked that motion before, that when we've adopted the agenda and the consent agenda items. To approve them for their first reading as well in one swoop.
It's two votes.
I wouldn't do that, I mean, I.
Two votes.
We've done it.
Because I don't know.
Yeah, I know, I'm not saying we've done it right, but I'm just saying, I can see this being, that's two votes, and I think the better procedure is to vote. At the, because then, it's to remove an item for debate. On your consent agenda, if you remove the item. That saves us the, I mean, because let's say it's a policy question. You wouldn't have to go back into the policy area, you would just debate it at the consent agenda if it needed debate. Yeah, I can see that.
Well, technically, what happens, it comes off the consent agenda, then goes under the regular agenda, at which time you would take it up.
Right.
As like all other agenda items.
We usually carry it after other business.
Right.
But it still solves the problem, I think that's a better practice to follow, because. Once again, how many votes does it take to remove something from the consent agenda?
Takes three of your members.
Three, three of the members.
To vote in favor of removal of an item.
Got it. Yet, it only takes one member to object to an agenda.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Yes, in other words, yeah, to amend the agenda, so if we are debating the agenda. We open the meeting.
Yeah, all right, yeah, let's just talk very briefly about that, because I'm a little concerned about what your policy, there's a policy in here that I, and I thought I'd marked it, now I can't find it. You have a policy that says you can amend the agenda with a two thirds vote, okay? Well, FOIA doesn't say that, and remember, I talked about hierarchy, all right? Robert, I mean, sorry. FOIA says that once a meeting is opened. You can amend an agenda with a two thirds vote. But. If you're going to take a final action. So let's say, let's use an example, let's talk about this Policy FF again. Let's assume for the sake of argument that Policy FF is not on your next board meeting, okay? So you've started your meeting and a member says, you know, we forgot to put Policy FF on here. Mister Chairman, I would move that we amend the agenda to include Policy FF under old business. The chair would say, okay. Well, that's going to take a two thirds vote, according to our policy. Do we have two thirds in favor, let's say it's unanimous to amend the agenda. So then you say to the body, okay. The agenda has been amended to give second reading to Policy FF. Everybody votes for it.
But doesn't that violate?
Can't do it, you can't do it, because it's not an emergency. But your policy says a two thirds vote can amend the agenda, it needs to be a little more tailored than that. Now, I guess there could be some kind of emergency or exigent circumstance, but I just can't think of one. I could try to make one up to cover you, but I'm not sure I'd be successful. I've certainly done that in the past, as kids, very familiar. I'm not saying it can't be figured out, but I don't like trying to, you know, figure that out.
Carol, Dr. Temple. Do you have any last questions of Mister Frapton?
I don't think so, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Mister Frapton, I greatly appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you, appreciate it.
Hopefully, we will not make your job more complicated now that we've become a little more.
What Robert's Rules, Robert's Rules does make the comment that frankly, the parliamentarian should be enfrankly called upon, so we'll see.
So, what I'd like to do is move on to section E. And Dr. Temple, I truly appreciate you taking the time, and I know. You're out on the far coast, so what I think we do is bring up for discussion, Policy BE. Which is a discussion on our timeless speaker protocols. So our meetings norms are a complement and not conflict with policy, but also. It was to discuss more on public comment. And we, when we first came on the board, we all remember, at least the four of us, five of us. We had public comment at Cal, and now we only have it at the board meeting, so. I bring it up for discussion, and for I weigh in on my position, is there anybody that would?
Dr. Temple, would you like to weigh in on this one?
Yes, I do, just have to find the microphone. Yes, I would like to weigh in on it, I think, I believe in, in the public. Having an opportunity to interact with us and explain, ask questions of us. And I think it would be very appropriate at the Cal meeting for us to have public comments. And I think the public comments could come after we have a discussion. Because sometimes the public comments come because people have questions. Or they have a misinterpretation of something because they haven't heard everything that's going on, so. Some opportunity, I think, for the public comments is a good one. I just watched a recent board meeting of a group out here, and. They have some public comments before, some public comments towards the end, but anyway. I'm not sure I'm advocating that, but I do think it would be very helpful. For us to have an opportunity for the public to weigh in. One thing I've noticed is that very few people come to the Cal meeting, and yet I think the Cal meetings are really. Informative for the public, and they should be there, I always feel like public comments ought to come after. At least the superintendent's report, because I think that the information we present is so, so important and so informing. So that's what I want to say.
Since I was part of the group to kind of change this, I know what our rationale was back then. When we first came on the board, public comment at Cal was held at the beginning of the meeting. And the challenge that we were having was that there was public comment on an issue that the board hadn't even heard, or other than what they had read. I can see some of the, in wanting to increase more public participation. I could see some justification, you know, at the end, but it would, that's the only way. I mean, the board has to have an opportunity to discuss it, see it, and have everything in front of it before the public starts weighing in. It's just a matter of procedure to me.
I don't think Robert's Rules says anything about public comment.
The only thing that I would say about public comment, like at the Cal, could be that. You know, maybe there's something that needs to be brought up, maybe at the board meeting because of its priority, so having. Public comments at the Cal might give us an agenda item that might be of interest. And I think that giving the opportunity for the public to speak whenever they feel like they need to, to the board. I think is appropriate.
I mean, we tried to audit finance, and what we found after, you know, six, seven months is that, you know, no one was showing up. So it's one of the reasons we kind of just dropped away from it. But, I mean, I could see, you know, with discussing, I'd have to see how we would have to work with it, but. It would definitely, in my opinion, definitely have to be at the end of the meeting after all the discussion was done.
Well, and I also, I also think that, you know, there's some groups that will come and keep presenting the same thing over and over again. So it definitely would be to ask the public to be respectful, to put one discussion forward. And if that requires giving them more than two minutes because they have asked for it. And maybe that needs to happen before, you know, like. I'm just going to go with the heritage keepers, instead of giving them two minutes of public comment, they should have been able to come for whatever. That's my understanding, should have been able to say, hey, I'd like to present, you know, a 10 minute discussion.
Well, then they, then they really need to be on the agenda that you would know that they would want to have it. You know, one of the other things the legislature does that we haven't done, I don't know that we want to do it, but, you know, on. Some important issues, sometimes you have a hearing or a town, you know, town hall for that to happen. But I did want to say that.
Dr. Temple, do you mind if I, do you mind if I say, I had started to speak when you did, do you mind if I say that before we move, that's okay. You can't see your, I've been in space before, too. But that's kind of like what, one of the things that I did as the Audit Finance, when I invited somebody to come and give us. A legislative update, but that's definitely something the chairman of the committee of the whole, or chairman of the board. Could do is, and also when I had that group of men, that mentor at North Charleston High School. I put them on the agenda with, I checked with other board members and made sure that I followed the policy, but. That's something that's definitely doable.
Can I, can I ask, kind of pulling on that thread, that if we see a public comment. To be able to, and maybe this does need the parliamentarian, was to actually. Like actually do a motion, like, hey, we want to bring this to the agenda, so it's not filling out the form. But more like on the fly, we have, you know, there's a number of board members that would like to see. And debate whatever that item is that gets brought to the board in public comment.
Push back on that because it violates policy. Ms. Trudy's over there shaking her head, it harms that, the policy is for district staffs that they can get the supporting documents that are needed.
No, 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 so follow on meetings is what I'm kind of mentioning, like, somebody says, and I'll just throw it out there. All schools should have lockers. And then, hey, I'd like to make a motion to put that on the agenda for the next discussion, instead of having to go, like, why can we not?
Would that violate FOIA laws, Mister Johnson?
I'm sure, so your question is, at the end of a meeting, you're suggesting that. You make a motion to put something on the agenda for the next meeting, is that what you're saying?
Correct, does that violate FOIA?
It's not, it would be violating the policy.
Yeah, violate policy.
Yeah, you need to have the requisite number of people to.
Well, but if we did get four votes at a, at a general meeting.
What you're doing is you're modifying the agenda, so you're taking an action item on something that wasn't properly, you know. Yeah, so that goes back to this emergency, you know, two thirds, our policy now allows you, if you had two thirds, you could actually do it. But I think, from what you're saying, the better procedure still to go ahead, you've got plenty of time. Is to get the four signatures, file the paperwork, and then have it placed on the agenda.
Right. You would still need to follow the policy.
Yeah, I just, it's, it's having watched a number of these other board meetings, like on Facebook and YouTube and things like that. And how the board just kind of stays silent when there's something specific about, but at least to say, hey. Members of the public, we're listening and we're acting, and like actually engage, but if it doesn't, if it violates FOIA, I'm good with that.
Now, now you come back, right when we have a rock. Rule question. There's the point of.
Excuse me, sir, you did not ask for personal privilege?
Oh, well, so, public comment generated, I think it was kind of ants, but we're going to do it anyway. Generated a thing, a comment, and one of the board members said, I'd like to make a motion to put that on the agenda for the next board meeting. Of course, they'd need, well, in this case, they'd need four or three, depending on whatever the next meeting was. Is that, that motion viol- Is that, that motion violating FOIA because it's generated from public comment? And my only comment is that we should be more responsive to public comments than what we, we do. Like, I've seen.
I agree.
With respect to public comments, just let me tell you some things I've observed. I've observed the way a lot of different bodies handle this. Most recently, for example, in the town of Somerville, they allowed public comment at their council meetings, let's say. With respect to items that are on the agenda, they allow limited public comment first up in the meeting so that the body can hear those comments before they take an action or consider an action and perhaps want to bring in those comments as part of their debate on an item that's on the agenda. With respect to general, I'll call it bitching and moaning that all public bodies get from their citizens about matters that aren't even on the agenda, they limit public comments to the end of the agenda. So that if people want to just talk about things that aren't pending before the body, they're given the right to do so, but they do it at the end.
But do they know whether or not, you're talking about, like, people will still have to sign up beforehand and then they divvy it out?
It's not a matter of divvying it out. If it's a matter that's pending before, of course, you know, the, the agenda's published. So people would write on the card, for example, County Council has cards to use, John Frampton wants to speak to item 5A on the agenda. And if they start talking about things that aren't on the agenda, then they're called out of order and required to sit down.
Yeah.
How do they do it at county?
Welcome to our first year in office.
Now, Georgetown County Council takes all, all matters of public interest, public comments, takes them all up before the meeting starts. Well, after the meeting starts, but before they get into the body, the, of the body.
That's, that's what we've done.
Yeah, exactly. But I think there's some good value to limiting initial public comments, only to matters on the agenda, because people necessarily that don't want to sit around and hear somebody just gripe and moan about something that's not even on an agenda, they're there for a reason.
But how do you kind of, I'm going to let Ms. Bailey go because she's, keeps trying to say something and.
I'm sorry.
What I want to say is I don't have any problems with public comments, but I do have a problem with the level of disrespect.
Yes, ma'am.
And dishonoring of the school board body. Now, I feel like our rules governing public comments should be stricter. When people don't abide by, when, when the chairman says, hey, be honorable and be respectful, and when they don't and they go over their time and they keep talking and talking and talking and talking, that's like they're trying to get a rise out of everybody in the room. So when they start doing that, we need to be able to nip that in the bud right then and there. Because that's not showing honor to the district.
Yes, ma'am.
That's not honoring the board, that's not honoring the people that actually come to hear the legitimate agenda items that we come to discuss.
I concur fully. That's up to your chairman to be the bad guy. I don't think he minds being a bad guy from my observations.
I, I ended up on the news, she was actually monitoring the public comments and somebody came and refused to listen to her when she said, sir, your time's up, your time is up, your time is up, at which time, as chairman, I stepped in and tried to, you know, also get him to stop and he overrode me. So calling for security to enforce the law that's actually posted on the front door, I ended up on the news.
Yeah.
Which is fine.
That's been done.
I do want to make a point. So in this public comment thing, as I did look at one other district, the district I graduated high school from, and they actually had public comments where literally it could have been a presentation because that's what was available. So there wasn't the whole two-minute rule, but if, and, and some of our organizations want to make a 10-minute presentation, they can go ahead and do that. It's not restricted and so that way that the, the board gets one voice hearing or a voice hearing what the public wants to say. Am I making, am I not being clear?
You're, you're saying that you think that people coming for public comments should have as much time as they want?
No, what, they, they've signed up for a slot, like, I want to give a, a presentation on, we'll just go, lockers, that they are, that they can be added to the agenda and use that, that time. And maybe it's greater than two minutes, but maybe it's restricted to, to 10 minutes. But there are other boards that don't have this tight restriction when it comes to public comments being a two-minute. And that way, if a, if an organization wants to bring something, they have, they don't have to do it like, oh, I'm going to bring my four members so I can get my eight-minute speech in. I can actually just get one person to deliver.
We've had people do that.
Right. But I'm just saying that it, it doesn't, it's, the two minutes isn't a rule that's steadfast across the nation.
slippery slope. You look at the length of our meetings and what is the purpose of public comment? There, there's no question, and, and this goes back to one of the points that you raised when I first met you, is how do we get in front of our constituents? How do we, you know, is there a better format of getting, and we have our website, we have our Facebook account, we have our email addresses. But, you know, public comment sometimes, when you, you know, you think about it and you listen to it, the biggest challenge is you can't respond. And now we've gotten better with that in allowing the superintendent to defend the district when somebody says something that is totally out of whack. So I think we're, you know, I, I think public comment has gotten better, you know, since we first started.
Definitely since we first started.
Which goes along with the issues that we have to face. I think this district's much more, you know, quieter.
That's like, when, when I was chairing Cal, that was one of the things that I brought up. If, if you want something addressed, it's better to actually email us. Sure, it doesn't go out when the media's here and they get to grandstand and throw Ed Kelly under the bus and things like that. But i, i, if you are truly wanting thoughtful response, that's the best way to do it because then I can forward it over to district staff, everything addressed and you're not limited on time.
Right, but the issue with that is then the, the public doesn't hear the question. So yes, of course, I answered it for that one person and that one person got to hear it.
No, I agree with that.
But then everyone else.
So maybe there's a recourse that we could go to have especially important productive things brought back to the meeting for discussion.
Stated, you know?
Yeah.
This was an email that a constituent brought up, you know, maybe there is, like at the end of a board, we, we have like a list of things that in, in District Two, this was an issue that came up, this is something that we addressed, you know? And so that maybe the public does see that a, a lot of things get answered, a lot of issues get resolved.
I agree with that, yeah.
Through email and through kind of more efficient ways of communicating with us than, because public comment, it, it's an incredibly frustrating.
I feel like we do a lot of stuff behind the scenes that the public would benefit and appreciate knowing if we discussed it more public. So I'm agreeing, I'm trying to push more toward more public discussion for matters also.
Or just a summary.
Mm-hmm. Or just a, yeah, a statement or something. Yeah, I agree with that 100%.
Is that like a secretary position on the board?
The idea of, of our public comments being related to the agenda items that we have for the Cal, maybe, you know, other, maybe we need another venue of some type for other issues that, you know, might not be related to the agenda, but, you know, people would want us to consider. I mean, that's when, that's when a town hall might be something. I'm sure the superintendent, when she goes out for coffees, she, she hears other things that people are interested in. So I think we have to be cognizant of, we have this meeting time and it can't go on forever and ever.
Dr. Temple, I, I love your idea about even us board members having town halls with the constituents, because I've wanted to do that. Like, yeah, like once a month or every other month or quarterly even probably would be best where we can be accessible. That's something I, I campaigned on and very much wanted to do for the board members that want to show up to it, because it is another meeting.
Can.
Or can, yeah.
And, and our superintendent has coffees throughout the district, town halls throughout the district.
I think they're talking about us, though.
They're open for all the public to attend and all trustees to attend. So I feel like we have avenues, we've just got to use them.
Right, or maybe we just, you know, stand with her instead of just attending them so that then, then people can ask us questions if they need to.
Right.
And that might mean.
Well, that point is.
And I will say, at the last coffee.
At the coffee meeting in my district.
Against, did refer to Ms. Watley, whose district we were in. And so that does happen, Ms. Jewitt.
Well, but those meetings aren't public either. I mean, they, they are, the public can attend, but they're not videotaped so that the public can watch those discussions. I mean, they're, they're great, but.
I would love to get everything to everybody, but that's not humanly possible. So we just have to do the best we can do and always focus on the children and their education, not the, any adults.
So to close out this discussion before we go on to the evaluation, there's been an awful lot of talk in trying to understand our rule BCC, which is our censor policy. And as I see it, it's, it's truly just a safety valve that upholds the standards when the norms fall in protecting the board's collective credibility. However, I think, I think it's, it's got to be said, you know, this is, this is a last resort. This is a peer-to-peer rule. I mean, this is something that's on us to, to handle and, and, and work with. You know, so it's really just holding us as board members accountable for what we do in our board meetings and our board presence without, as a weaponizing tool. But I, I wanted to bring that up. I, I was curious to hear how, you know, County Council handles it.
Well, from my standpoint and experience, and obviously I know we have Mr. Frampton here, so I've asked him to chime in on this. It, it all goes back to, to policy. Because at the end of the day, County Council, just like your board, is very limited in terms of what it can do to an individual member. And so essentially, what they're allowed to do within the confines of the law is to censure some kind of public buffer man within the confines of the rules. But it's clearly laid out what level of action rises to meet that criteria so that that becomes an appropriate step. But again, that does not, you, you, like I said, it's, it's very limited. And it's just, you know, a public display of this is what we're putting on in hopes that this would rein this person back into conducting themselves within the rules. You can't ban them from meetings. Or, you know, you certainly don't have the ability, only the governor can, you know, remove, so that's not an option. Now, the one thing I will say to kind of temper that within censure itself, and this is, even goes back to looking at your FOIA rules. If someone is being so disruptive in the course of a meeting that you can't effectively conduct the meeting, I think there's at least some case law that says in that situation, that person can be removed. And that, and, and I think there's a situation, I think there were a municipal council situation where things got involved and, and the municipal council member was removed from the, from the meeting. But again, they, that was just for that specific meeting. They certainly would be able to come back to the next meeting. So that's pretty much what you're limited in terms of doing. But again, it needs to be spelled out clearly in your, in your policy, whatever, you know, and, and, and listing out examples of what kind of behavior is what would constitute something that would be essential. But again, it, it only, I don't know, other, other way to say that, it's only as good as the piece of paper or the public pronouncement that's made. But the hope is that that will bring the person back into compliance. But again, there's no guarantee. And, and, and if you do that and it still doesn't work, that's really about all you can do.
Yeah. There, there was a county far, far away that had a member that would divulge what took place in executive session to a person who was suing said county far, far away. So that all lawyer-client privilege that took place in executive session regarding pending litigation was kind of fruitless because it was going back to opposing counsel. So what ultimately happened was that anything that that council member sponsored, moved, voted for, it didn't matter how good it was, they all voted against it. He was always a lone vote out there because of what he did. And counsel finally got to the point where although they cannot take an action in, you know, without, that requires a quorum, they made it clear to said attorney for that county far, far away, what they would intend to do and support, which was then communicated as appropriately communicated. But frankly, no more discussions took place in executive session because they couldn't. But that council member never had another piece of legislation he sponsored ever pass, period.
You have zero influence without relationship.
Yes, ma'am. That's exactly right.
It's not the chairman sitting here or being asked to go jump all over and, you know, regulate how you're acting as a board member or how you're acting to other board members. I mean, you can note it, but, you know, it's really, the onus is on us as a group. So, and, and the other thing, the rule requires that you discuss it and really it, it's if they continue.
That goes back to our first year in office, when we had board members who were literally targeting their political opposition at any chance possible.
There's no politics.
And first one, the, yeah. Well, listen, I, I, we lived this, so you could learn, okay, but you're interrupting me, you could learn something from this because it could happen to you. So we literally had a board member, the very first one they went after, who to this day, his character and reputation smeared in the media. But that was the point that I kept trying to bring up with the other board members and urging you not to take that course, because then that set a precedent to when they moved on to another board member and then another board member. And they weaponized this process. Because I, when I read the policy, I was like, I think there's an escalation where you give a person, okay, the first step is this, and then the, if they violate it again, then the step is this. But they threw the whole thing at, at him and he ended up publicly villainized.
And, and that was well documented, whatever happened. And I, I think moving forward, what we need to be talking about is this board and how we're handling ourselves. Because I, I mean, we were new, I'm not going to say mistakes weren't made, a lot of mistakes were made. But that's why I think this, it was a, when I looked at the surveys, everybody asked for this to be discussed. And I think it's just clear that, you know, we understand this isn't the board chair's responsibility, this is our collective responsibility. And it's our collective responsibility if we feel that somebody's out of line in their duties as a board member. Because I, I think that's, you know, I think we discuss that. It's, you know, we're private individuals, but where censor goes in and you read our policy, it's very clear, you know, it's when you're acting as a board member.
Do we have the policy, does somebody have it handy? Can we read it out right now, what our current policy is?
Can you bring it up? It's a good point.
Just so, since we're discussing it.
I'd be glad to read it. The board and is, is BCC, Ms. Jewitt. The board and each of its members are committed to faithful compliance with the provisions of the board's policies. The board recognizes that its failure to deal with deliberate or continuing violations of its policies risk the loss of confidence in the board's ability to govern effectively. Therefore, in the event of a member's mistaken, willful and/or continuing violation of policy, the board ordinarily. the board ordinarily will address the issue by the following process. One, a conversation in a private setting between the member considered to be in violation in the board chair or another individual member. Discussion in a private, second bullet, excuse me. Discussion in a private session between the member considered to be in violation in the full board. Third bullet, possible removal by the board from any leadership positions to which the offending member has been appointed or elected. And fourth bullet, censure of the offending member of the board as a means of separating the board's focus and intent from those of the offending member. BCC.
It has to be violation of policy.
Yeah, violation of the board member acting within what-
I think-
Our duties are.
The comment I would want to make is, and I was trying to find the other policy, is I think there has to be alignment between this policy, BCC, and the policy, I'm sorry, I can't find the letters right now, of our ethics. That, that there needs to be alignment there. Because we need to recognize that we as board members, even though we have our own First Amendment rights, we still are board members and things we say or do reflect on the district or reflect on the board. But I think that there needs to be alignment between the BCC, the censor policy, and the policy we have that speaks to our ethics.
And that's BCA, Dr. Temple, Board Member Code of Ethics. Spot on, yes, ma'am. The trustees of the CCSD and the board of the constituent districts, which that has to be updated, it, it's not quite there yet, that commit themselves and their members to ethical, civil, businesslike, and lawful conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum while acting as board members. The board shall have the authority and responsibility to apply these standards of conduct. The board members shall honor the high responsibility that their membership demands by thinking always in terms of effectively meeting educational goals for children. Two, understanding that the basic function of a school board is policymaking, not administration, and accepting the responsibility of learning to discriminate intelligently between these two functions. Number three, accepting the responsibility along with fellow board members of budgeting. Number four, placing children's interests above partisan or other political interests. Five, representing at all times the entire school district. Number six, accepting the responsibility of becoming well-informed concerning FOIA as it relates to board service and public bodies. Seven, recognizing responsibility as a state official to seek the improvement of education. Eight, conforming to a standard of civility in interactions with other board members, employees, students, and the public so as to treat all persons with dignity and courtesy. Verthany, threats, threatening job termination, or abusive language is prohibited. And if use may subject a board member to public reprimand or repeated constitutes removal from office through procedures provided in the code. And then it goes on to suggest that in order to build relationships between the superintendent and staff and among themselves, that board members shall maintain a system of communication that builds on respect, recognizing that authority rests with the board. These things Mr. Lassane suggested earlier. And that individual members have no legal status to bind the board, refraining from assuming personal responsibility. And it goes on and on and talks about the relationship between the board and the superintendent. And that's BCC. It's fairly lengthy.
B, B C?
BCA, I'm sorry, Ms. Jewitt. BCA, Board Member Code of Ethics.
It's the Code of Ethics, BCA. But I think the clear language in that policy, once again, is in your actions as a board member and your official capacity as a board member on something that is, you know, within, or makes its way to the Charleston School District's families platform in your actions as a board member. I think it's very clear. But once again, it's peer. I mean, so much of this is if we ever have an issue like that. And we have had it. And we've had a lot of discussions on it in executive session and non-executive session. So I just, I put that out. So, I think that's enough said of that. Last but not least, and we might be able to get out of here a little early and catch some fresh air, superintendent evaluation.
I don't want to miss this, but I, I do need just a minute. I've, I've got to take a point of personal privilege.
Well, since, since we have actually 10 minutes before. I think we could all take a personal privilege for the next five, 10 minutes. We'll take a break.
Keith, I thought we were supposed to speak about BID.
You're right. I skipped over it. Dr. Temple, please enthral us with why you want to talk about BID. Dr. Temple?
I said, we could, I mean, if people need their personal, whatever it's called. We could-
We only lost Ms. Watley.
It's okay, we can keep-
We only lost Ms. Watley.
She can come back.
Well-
And we can, I'm sure we can bring her back up to speed on this one.
Okay. All right, just on BID. I mean, we need to talk about that compensation. That, that's the policy that talks about the compensation. And we ended up, what, we passed that policy? And then we learned that it is the Charleston County-
The state law, the state law got it.
Yeah, by state law. So we didn't have it in, it wasn't in the policy. So we didn't realize that the legislative delegation needed to weigh in on that. I still think, I, I have to believe it's still important, I think, to address the salary that board members get. That policy was written a long time ago. And, you know, things that, things that change our involvement is certainly extensive. And it's been said to me, well, if, you know, board members want additional funds, they need to talk to their legislators. But I, I'm thinking that it would be helpful if administration would approach the legislative delegation with a proposal for how that, how that might work. That maybe the salary could be increased and then there could be just annual costs of living or inflation pieces added.
I don't disagree with you about it being addressed. I feel like because it is policy, it might put the district in a difficult situation. I feel like it's more an issue the board needs to address. I could be wrong. But since policy is one of our items, I don't know for what we ought not to consider writing a resolution, taking a vote on it. If the resolution passes, asking the legislature to address it, then we address it to our legislative delegation chair.
And Dr. Temple, we have planned, I, I think you all have noticed of, we've planned for a meeting with the legislative delegation, with staff and the board for, I believe it is September the 24th. And so we certainly could discuss the matter with the delegation at that time.
I think that would be appropriate. I just, I just don't like the idea of asking individual board members to ask their legislative representative about this. I think we should, you know, approach it as a board.
I, I actually agree with Dr. Temple. I think it'd be much better if we drafted up a resolution, the board voted on it, and then we presented it to the legislators and gave them direction. I don't think this is an administrative staff issue. This is, you know, we're just one of those weird districts, unfortunately, that has this provision that's stopping us from, you know, entering in our own policy. But I think a resolution would be the way to go.
So, Dr. Temple, we can certainly discuss that with you all more. There's a board meeting between now and the 24th. And so we can, Ms. Thompson and Mr. Prentice and I, we, we have a sensitive matter. Mr. Prentice is stepping out to handle. But we can discuss that amongst ourselves and with you all and, and proceed from there.
And, and that way, you know, there's full transparency on the discussion. It's debated. There's no FOIA issue. I, I would feel uncomfortable talking to legislators with a quorum at a breakfast because that's not what it's really supposed to be about. But I think the resolution action is, is definitely the way to do it.
And putting it on the agenda for the board meeting allows for the public discussion with approved quorum.
That's correct. Right, Mr. Frampton?
I agree.
Thank you, Dr. Temple.
Excellent. Now we can take the point of privilege.
When do you want to reconvene, Mr. Chairman, 4:20?
Yeah, let's hit 4:20.
Thank you, Mr. Geraskey. So what you have, well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Temple and Ms. McKinney. They worked really hard on the evaluation that the evaluation tool that was approved by board vote on February 24th of this past year. The odd numbered indicators will be what we're focusing on for the 2025 year. And then those even numbered indicators would be the focus for the 2026 year. Just wanted to make sure that we made that point in the beginning. You'll see a folder at your seat. This does house your, basically just a hard copy of this evaluation. What I tried to do in these slides is just to bring out a few of the major points and just to do a high level overview, if that sounds okay. Okay, if we could get it, thank you very much. So just a few points about the superintendent evaluation. When you're looking at this, based those levels, a three is based on aspirational or high standard of performance. It's really important to understand that. A score of two would reflect satisfactory performance. You'll see that there are actually three categories or three levels for the scoring guide. They're at the bottom of the slide. Not met means basically there's no evidence of implementation or no progress that would exist for the indicator. Some progress, it can mean that there is evidence of implementation and that some progress has occurred. That could be any amount of progress. And then met, of course, would be that there is evidence that would indicate that there is effective implementation or that the progress target has been met for that year. One of the caveats here that I think is probably important to make note of, if the board member does not feel like they have enough information or knowledge to be able to score that particular indicator, they can actually basically not rate or skip it. That will not impact the rating calculations. Only those that actually score would be included in that indicator's ratings. Okay, so how does the process work? Please go back. Thanks. So how does the process work? So first, there is the superintendent team will conduct a state of the district meeting. After school achievement data is encumbered. You've actually already had some of that when the superintendent did her end of year report. She did report on some of the indicators at that time. The second step is actually when you're looking at the ratings. The ratings for the superintendent performance standards are actually broken into three focus areas. And we're going to kind of walk through those different focus areas. But those three areas, responsibilities, district management responsibilities, and then the board and community responsibilities. Okay, so to talk a little bit about that first focus area, those educational leadership responsibilities. The three goals that you see here, one is curriculum instruction. And it basically looks at effective implementation of exactly as it's a viable curriculum and that instruction is showing high expectations for all learners. You'll see some of the evidence over to the right of what a superintendent might provide to show you that there is effective implementation, such as scope and sequence of a curriculum, MTSS resources, 90-day action plans that are happening this year. Could be things like curriculum and services for our multilingual learners. All of those things could be examples of how a superintendent would show evidence that this was happening in the schools. The second goal, school climate and student engagement. You're going to see here that this has to do with the learning environment and how the superintendent engages in the learning process and supports supports this with the staff and also with the public. You'll see the Huggins highlights would be an example of the communication that happens every week with our district employees. The round tables, the meeting greets, the coffee talks, surveys that have been conducted, such as teacher alliance, climate, the customer service surveys that occur with our staff. You'll also see that this also has some quantitative data. There are two or actually three items here, one B3, one B5, and one B6 that would actually be pre-filled data. So what will happen with the evaluation is if there is like data that is collected, that will already be populated for you so that you can then determine. So you won't have to do that part. It will only be those items where there's not a definitive quantitative measure that you would have to look over the evidence and be able to determine what level of, what category rating that would receive. Goal 1C has to do with planning and continuous improvement. This would be all the strategic planning, all the continuous improvement processes that are within the district. Cognia accreditation is a great example of that occurring in our district and the district currently being accredited. The CCSD 1 Plan works, School Newell, we're playing. Anything that has to do with the academic council, which is now Fuel Council in the district, board monitoring reports are a part of that work because it's all looking at how we're utilizing data to make strategic actions to improve student outcomes. Any questions about this first part? Okay, so the next slide actually shows you the last three areas that fall under the educational leadership responsibilities. These three areas, academic leadership and literacy, numeracy, and graduation rate in college and career readiness, or, excuse me, college or career readiness. All three of these will be pre-populated or pre-filled because these are quantitative measures.
So it's really important for the board to know. And I want to thank Dr. Temple and Mrs. McKinney again for working so hard on this really robust instrument. It was really important to me to be held accountable for student outcomes, just like we're holding staff here, principals and teachers accountable for student outcomes. So the ambitious goals that the board has established are reflected in addition to all the other things in this instrument. And it's all captured here. Not only growth, but also the actual proficiency and achievement of students and groups of students. And so we'll provide all the data very transparently to you prior to your actual assessment and rating. May, go ahead, Mrs. Wiley. I see you ready.
Just a thought, one thing that I like about the inclusion of this, especially with where we are raising the bar to this year.
Sure.
Especially come October when we get the scorecards and everything back.
Report cards, yes ma'am.
Is, because you know, you're not going to be superintendent forever as much as we all love you.
Absolutely not.
But your predecessor now has got a very high bar that they're going to have to maintain.
Well, and I've asked to be held accountable every year. So whereas this year you'll be holding me accountable for the odd numbered indicators, every year you'll hold me accountable for every student outcome indicator. So we'll provide this information every year. And today we'll talk a little bit about end of course. And whereas we're outperforming the state for all students and end of course, and whereas we've grown all students, black and brown children still perform subpar in this district compared to the state numbers. And so we'll talk very transparently about this and we'll provide this to you so that it's easy to understand because we know it's a lot to digest. Sorry, Mrs. Roberts, I want to.
I'm sorry, not predecessor, successor.
I knew what you meant, ma'am. I knew what you meant. I was an English teacher. I knew what you intended. No, ma'am, I've worked on that with Mr. Frampton a bit.
So I think one of the things that you said is really, not that all of it was not important, but I think it is really important to know that these goals are quite aspirational.
They really are. The prior board, we set some really. It's hard to tell groups of parents that your child's in the 10% or the 25%. If we establish a 75% proficiency rate, well, your child happens to be in the 25% that won't learn to read. So we did set really aspirational goals. And my work won't be finished till all kids are where they need to be. And so they are ambitious.
So again, as Superintendent Huggins said, all of these would be pre-filled. It all has to do with student achievement, student progress. And we'll go to the next one. This will take us actually to our district management responsibilities.
This is where we'll switch back to at your request, board. I could do them all. In fact, the first year, if you want to, I mean, I'm happy to do that. It'd be a few more days, but that's okay. This is where we switch back to the odd numbers on odd years and even numbers on even years, I think, right?
That is correct. So like for goal 2A, you would be looking at 1A, or excuse me, 2A1, facilities and operations, 2A3, information technology, and so forth. You'll see some of the examples there that would show evidence that the superintendent was making progress in these areas, such as the standard operating procedures that you'll find in IT, cybersecurity incident response plans, nutrition services report, transportation routes, safe schools trainings, things like that that have to do with facilities and operations. Goal 2B, which is fiscal management. There are some great examples for the budget, especially with our distinguished budget presentation award that just occurred. The June 25th, or June 2025 financial update report that was received by the board. The approved budget book, I think that's a great example of some of the evidence that would prove fiscal management. And then goal 2C has to do with human resource management. So you're going to be looking for things like recruitment events. You'll be looking for teacher certification, apprenticeships, like the MOU that would be provided as part of this work. Cohort agreements that have to do with teacher training. This would also relate to performance evaluations. The OneView calendar that we have that shows professional development across the year and shows how those overlays actually streamline and relate to each other. There are two pieces on this that are pre-filled. That would be administrator quality and teacher retention. Again, because those are data points that you would not have to go and look up. They're just pre-populated into the fields for you. Okay, and focus area three, which has to do with board and community relationships. There are actually two goals here. Goal 3A and then goal 3B. Goal 3A has to do with board relations. These, again, board briefs, board retreats, like you're in right now, the superintendent reports, any type of reporting requirements that have taken place with the State Department, adopted policies, any of those round tables, all of that would be evidence for this particular goal. And then goal 3B has to do with those community relationships. The family data conferences, all those resources and how that's coming up in November. Social media presence, website, superintendent engagements, all of those round tables, meeting greets, legislative delegation, community partnerships through local, any of those things. Also the public interactive dashboard, that being again, a way to show transparency. The monthly leadership press conferences are also a good example of that. So those are the three focus areas and the goals that you would be looking at. Again, we're looking at the odd numbered indicators, with the exception of those student achievement or student outcome measures. So what happens after you've had an opportunity to look through the instrument and to review the documentation that will be provided by the superintendent? So step three, you receive a printed evaluation instrument that's pre-filled. The one that you currently have in your folder is not pre-filled. This is just to give you an example of an overview of the document. You'll receive that September, October, so sometime this month or early in October. You'll submit your completed evaluation, which has a tally sheet in a sealed envelope to this office. The board of trustees or the chair will actually provide a date for that. And then you'll see how those scores are actually compiled to create a single overall evaluation descriptor. And this is how the points work. 11 to 17 needs improvement, 18 to 25 would be proficient, and then 26 to 33 would earn exemplary overall evaluation. Just a couple of items here. The conventional rounding is applied when calculating the final score. So no rounding occurs until the end. And then some people just want to know that so we're sure that you knew how that would be applied. That can make a difference sometimes. We also provide a spreadsheet so that you don't have to do all the calculating yourself. You'll just input your score and the formulas are already inputted so that it will automatically do it for you. Just to make it a little more user friendly. And last, well, actually not last year, but almost the end. Step four would be executive session. This is when you, as the trustees, would meet in the executive session at a special called board meeting. Each trustee receives a summary of the numerical scores along with comments. It is important to know that if a one is provided as a score, then there is a requirement to actually provide a comment of why that score was obtained. The evaluation team does review the comprehensive evaluation and converts to the overall score. And then the trustees, with an attorney and appointment from the Office of Accountability, will write the evaluation report, including the final rating, any highlights, and also any feedback, or constructive feedback. And then step five, the trustees will meet an executive session with the superintendent to discuss the outcome of the evaluation. And the superintendent will be presented with that final evaluation summary. And the superintendent will be presented with that final evaluation summary. And then the last two steps. Following the conference, the superintendent will have five business days to respond before the summary of that report is released to the public in open session. One important, one important note here is that the board will speak in one voice in its evaluation of the superintendent. That would be for the actual written report as well as during the open session. And then the very last step, the superintendent continues to make regular updates to the trustees, report on progress and towards meeting those goals and indicators and to provide any feedback on any concerns that were provided. So just like she does now with the monitoring reports and that sort of thing, superintendent reports, the same would occur. And that is pretty much it in a nutshell.
And so for the trustees, it's important for you to know that the district now utilizes a cascading system of evaluation. So everyone's, everyone's evaluations this year and the goals that they're setting now are all based on the superintendent's evaluation and the goals established by the board for students. And so everything cascades, even at the senior level. So Mr. Barrowie is held accountable as a chief operating officer for student achievement and student outcomes. Because if students don't feel safe at school, if they can't get to school, if they're not warm at school, if they're not fed at school, if they don't get their medication at school, then they can't achieve at school, right? Same for Mr. Prentice. If budgets aren't equitable, if folks don't have resources, if his folks don't make sure other people get paid, kids can't achieve. And so Mr. Prentice is held accountable for student achievement, just like Mr. Barrowie is held accountable for student achievement, just like I'm held accountable for student achievement, just like Mr. Antonelli at Minimager is held accountable for student achievement as the leader. And so that's the most effective system based on the work that we've done across the nation for assessment and evaluation of employees. And so that's, we're having really honest conversations with our folks so that there's a system of accountability established from the classroom to the superintendent seat, to the board seat. So with that, we're certainly open to any questions you might have or feedback, Mrs. McKinney and Dr. Temple, that you might have since you brought this to the board for approval.
Certainly, the only thing I would add to Dr. Temple's hard work in my probably just proofreading is the help that we've got from Ms. Huggins and national help and background. And then Ms. Roberts and Dr. Gilmore putting it together for us. So it was a big group effort.
28 pages is a pretty lengthy evaluation instrument.
I really preferred a briefer one, just for those that want to fuss about the length of this one, but I got outvoted. So I support this one.
Yeah, it is lengthy, but it is thorough. And I'm, I'm really proud of our district board for adopting the evaluation. It's something I think is really important. And in my view, in my experience, it's, it's rigorous. And I think the community is going to really appreciate the fact that we as a board have taken things very seriously. I mean, we're very focused on the student outcomes, which is where our work needs to be. And I think holding the superintendent and, and the staff all the way down to the school level speaks for the, for our intentions of how important student achievement is to all of us.
I just have one comment. I know we, we voted on this and I, and I thank my trustees for doing this in, why this didn't come up earlier, but in reflection of doing other evaluations. I really like the feedback that, that our superintendent might give to a response and reflecting and actually changing that. And maybe that's not within policy, but I really like the fact that she could say, you know what, you weren't there when I did X and come back and say, you know what, you're right. I'd like to change my score to a higher, as an example, just out of reflection, something I've done before in evaluations.
I have a question. As we, when we get this and we're filling it out, if we have any questions about how it's done, can, who do we talk to?
You know what, Mrs. Bailey, it's a really great question. And we, we, there will be a booklet for you. I'm already in the process of putting together a booklet for every indicator. And hopefully it won't be information overload, but just the nature of the instrument itself lends itself to a lot of artifacts being provided to you. So you have evidence that we've done, what we've said we've done. And if you have questions about the content of what we provide, you can reach out directly to me so that I can explain. If you don't feel there's ample justification for an indicator and you want to give me the benefit of the doubt, you can reach directly out to me. If you have any question about the, the tool itself, and it's best to contact Dr. Gilmore, who couldn't be here today, who helped develop this as a really a third party, or Mrs. Roberts. And/or you can, if you have questions, number three, about the intent, you can seek input from Mrs. McKinney or Dr. Temple, who really worked really hard with some national examples and other thought partners to develop the instrument. So the answer would be me, Joanna, or Buffy, or Pam, or Carol. Thank you, Mrs. Bailey.
Any last words, Dr. Kepin?
Any last words, Mr. Gobert?
I'd like to recruit you too for the board self-evaluation survey that we need and we should be discussing at some point. Not that I think we need 38 pages, but nevertheless, it is something that we should be, are required to do and should be doing. So we should bring that up for a discussion at some point in the near future. Dr. Temple, are you hearing me? Commit you to something.
I hear you.
That was a long pause, Dr. Temple.
I know, but I'm having trouble finding my mute button. On mute, but yes, I think it would be very important and very, I mean, it gives us an honest way to, to communicate with each other. And I think, I think it's, I think it's, I think it's important to do.
Yeah, I agree. I don't think you're going to get any, I will, I will talk to this, to the superintendent and legal to see how best to handle this, but see what we need to do, if anything. But I'm glad you're on board.
Isn't that.
And I like your thought process.
Isn't that in a violation of FOIA to add that to the agenda item? Just out of curiosity.
And on superintendent evaluations.
Of the board evaluation.
Well, you know, in, in all fairness, I think the valuation for the board, a self-evaluation is very important. I mean, we ask our students to take a test.
We do.
And we're asking our superintendent to be evaluated. So I think it's more than fair, the board does a self-evaluation also.
Like I said, I'll, I'll talk to staff and legal and figure out, you know, get something like this done.
I'm sure some instruments are out there.
Yes, ma'am.
And I was thinking over the break, and, and I don't, I think this is, it can cover, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Frampton. I was thinking about the joint liaison issue. And the joint liaison issue as to when and how to discuss it, because we need to, it would have to be a policy change. And because of the timing and everything, it would have to be something we would have to get on the September board meeting. So I may be reaching out, drafting up the language and reaching out to four of you to get that on the agenda so that we can move in and discuss it as to the need. Because I think Mr. Johnson to something, I think that's definitely, but it would have to be a policy change because that's when we do that all in November, so.
Well, we'll put it on the agenda with Mr. Holland Shad and Mrs. Thompson.
Yeah.
Look at the board committee policy for potential adjustments or recommendations.
One thing we might want to, you know, it's, I think it's challenging to have a chair, have co-chairs. I think it would also be challenging to have co-liaisons. Maybe we have a liaison and a, whether you call it associate liaison, or think, think of some way, somebody has to take the lead. And you don't want to be, well, is it you or is it me? So we can, we can work on that.
Yeah, that's, you're right, because you can't have two people reporting at Cal. We'd be here forever. But at the same time, it takes a lot of pressure off of the lead liaison because things come up as we find out. So it's just something.
I had something to follow up. I actually had a constituent who was listening to us come to me in one of our breaks. Going back to public comments, one idea she had was for us at the end of our board meetings, or I guess it's just our board meetings, since we don't have public comments at Cal. But at the end of the board meeting, having us have the opportunity to have our two minutes each board member to maybe mention something within our own district or any sort of response we might want to have.
Boy, you've got to state it ahead of time, if it's a trustee making a report or something.
I think what we've got to do is, is talk to legal on that and just figure out if there's a way. Because I could make, I could easily make the counterargument that if you're just commenting on something that was discussed during the board meeting, it should be fair game because it would be publicly addressed. But if you're addressing about issues that weren't covered at the board meeting, I could see a, I mean, but I think we, we have to bring it up. It's a good thing to consider because it may.
I guess it's done at some other meeting. What county council meeting does it?
All good ideas, yeah.
Worth, worth bringing up.
With that being said, and thinking that we have still a Cal and a special meeting following, it's time to adjourn today. Appreciate staff and all the board members for attending. Dr. Temple, thank you very much for taking time. Out West, superintendent and your staff.
Thank you.
You always do a good job. And for those that endured during this, thank you for joining us. We are adjourned.